Call this meeting of the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission to order for July 16th, 2015. Could I have a roll call of the members, please?
Alan Bucknam.
Present.
Steve Timms.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Emory Dorsey.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Donna Kimsey.
Here.
Pam Olson.
Here.
Dirk Bowden will be absent this evening.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next up on the agenda is to approve the order of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move.
I move to approve the order of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Please vote. Sorry, I accidentally voted for Mayor Jay. My bad. I'm not Mayor Jay, I promise. Okay, and next up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from June 4th.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2015.
Okay, please vote.
Next item on the agenda is the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. We are hearing three cases today, so if you're here to speak on anything related to those cases, you'll have the opportunity when we hear those cases, but if you're here and would like to speak on any other item that's not on the agenda, you're welcome to. Do we have anybody?
No.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing. We've got three cases tonight. Excuse me. First case number is WZ-14-14 and WA-15-05, an application filed by King Supers Incorporated for approval of a specific development plan for a nine-pump fueling station with a canopy and a detention pond with a variance from the zero to 20-foot build-to-line for the property's owned planned commercial development located at 12525 West 32nd Avenue. And Meredith, you have a presentation for us?
Before beginning, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a disclosure. Fellow commissioners, I'd like to make a disclosure that several years ago I was contracted to perform design work for Regency Center projects through a consultant of the applicant, Mr. Shekel, and simultaneously had business meetings in reference to past projects. I've had no direct contact with Regency Centers or Mr. Shekel for several years, and that knowing Mr. Shekel and Regency Centers does not affect my ability to be objective on this case.
Are there any objections to Commissioner Ohm hearing this case, commissioners? Okay, please proceed.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. And joining me tonight at the staff table are my colleagues, Mark Westberg, who is the Public Works Project Supervisor, and Gerald Dahl, the City Attorney in the back row. So with that, we're discussing WZ-14-14 and WA-15-05, which is a request for approval of a planned commercial development, specific development plan with a variance. Property location is 12525 West 32nd Avenue. Area of the site is 2.09 acres. Current zoning is planned commercial development. The comprehensive plan designates primary commercial corridor, community commercial center, mixed-use commercial. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, case file, and packet materials.
So entered, thanks.
The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge, and I'll correct, noticing publishing requirements have been met, therefore, the commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. Before I get into the nuts and bolts of the case, I'd like to do a little Plan Development 101. The city's plan development process is a two-step process. The first step is the zone change and approval of an outline development plan. That document sets general guidelines and themes for the subdivision, or excuse me, for the plan development. It also establishes allowed uses and development standards. The ODP approval requires public hearing in front of both planning commission and city council, and we had an ODP that was approved back in January of 2015. The specific development plan is the second step of the process, and that case typically involves the finer details of a certain portion of a development. In this situation, we have an overall plan development, outline development plan, with the specific development plan just being in one corner, and I'll get into that in a minute. New SDP approvals are required to have a single hearing in front of planning commission, and typically a city council hearing is not required unless there is a condition of approval that the applicant does not agree with, or if there is a recommendation of denial. And I would note that a neighborhood meeting is not required for a specific development plan. So, this is an outline of the Applewood Village Shopping Center. North is to the top, and you can see that it is bounded by 38th Avenue at the north, Youngfield on the west, 32nd Avenue here on the south, with Wright Court budding the property just on the very southeast portion. It is 35 acres in size and is actually the city's largest commercial center. It does serve area residents as well as drawing from customers and patrons from the region. It is located at a fairly busy location within the city of Wheat Ridge with I-70 just to the west, and I would note that there are often on-ramps, both for 38th Avenue and for 32nd Avenue, and this is a popular place for folks on the way to and from the mountains to stop and get all their needs fulfilled, their shopping needs fulfilled, I'll say. The surrounding properties include a variety of land uses. On the east and north sides of the center are residential neighborhoods, generally zoned R1A. To the south across 32nd are a mix of homes and businesses, and again, abutting the property to the west is Youngfield Street with I-70 beyond that. The shopping center was rezoned from neighborhood commercial, restricted commercial, and commercial one, to planned commercial development pursuant to case number WZ-14-9, and the intent of that application was to incorporate new ownership parcels, consolidate the boundaries of the shopping center, and then also to prepare for redevelopment opportunities. And I would note that most of those redevelopment opportunities are on the southern portion of the shopping center. So, this is a copy of the second page of the outline development plan. The first page was what I call the declaration page, and I'm not, we're not looking at that tonight, but this is the second page, which really shows the layout of the shopping center. And again, with that zone change, the intent of the ODP was to recognize existing conditions and then establish standards and guidelines for new redevelopment areas. It also includes parcels that were recently acquired by Regency Centers, the owner. So in a nutshell, I'll just go briefly through some of the highlights of the ODP document. First of all, the allowable uses. Uses permitted under the existing ODP are all commercial one uses, which includes service office retail, including large retail centers. Also included as permitted land uses are drive-through facilities. The development standards on the property generally refer back to the Architectural and Site Design Manual for the front setback. The property is then within the Contemporary Overlay District, which requires a zero to 20-foot build-to-line adjacent to public streets, and then the rest of those defer back to the C1 regulations. Minimum landscaping on the property is required at 10% and a maximum building height of 50 feet. We did try to include language that requires development in the southeast corner, which would be over here, of the shopping center, to include upgraded vertical landscaping, reduction of lighting at night, and limited business hours. So, primary accesses into the shopping center are via a major interior drive that runs from, oops, 32nd down here, up to 38th Avenue. I'd point out that neither of those intersections are signalized. There's also a variety of individual curb cuts, both along Youngfield Street and 32nd, and we included language in the ODP to ensure that staff had the ability to look at those access points if there were redevelopment proposed and require consolidation and internal access where appropriate. So. What you're seeing on the image right now is the proposed redevelopment area on the southeast corner of the shopping center. To help orient you, north is to the top. We've got 32nd Avenue, which runs down the south perimeter of the site, Youngfield over here on the west. This is Wright Court that comes, is a cul-de-sac bulb which extends north from 32nd. The site that is under consideration for redevelopment is outlined in red, and I would point out that that entrance into the shopping center from 32nd Avenue is just at this location. So again, the potential redevelopment site is at the very southeast corner of the shopping center. It includes what I like to refer to as the old Chicago Building, which is located right here. There are two vacant pads down here at the south that are going to be included. There is a small retail building located at this location, and then this is a parcel of land which has a parking lot and abuts up to the rear of that, what I call the old Chicago Building. The proposed, SDP really has two components to it. The first is the fueling station, which will be in ancillary use to the existing King Supers. It's on about 1.26 acres. And then the second piece of that is a detention pond, which will be located over here on the very east portion, which will serve for drainage and stormwater needs for redevelopment of the south side of the shopping center, and it's about eight tenths of an acre in sight. The site has some interesting topographics going. There is roughly 18 feet of change, elevation change, from the old Chicago site down to 32nd Avenue, and I believe the grade change between the back of the building and the lower parking lot is about 14 feet. There's also a waterline easement that runs, it's 50 feet wide, and it runs across the very eastern portion of what will be the detention area, and that is owned by Denver Water. There's existing curb and gutter and an eight-foot wide sidewalk on the south side of the project, or, yeah, south side of the project on 32nd Avenue, which was installed as part of a city CIP project that was done in 2013. Wright Street has a portion that has curb and gutter and an attached four-foot sidewalk. So let's take a look at some pictures of the site. So, this is the view standing in the Wright Court cul-de-sac, looking towards the west, towards the rear of the old Chicago Building. This is standing in that same cul-de-sac bulb, looking, I believe it would be south, or excuse me, that's wrong, northeast from Wright Court towards, these are mixed up, I apologize, I've got the wrong label on this. So this is standing in the Wright Court cul-de-sac bulb, looking east towards some of the roof lines of those existing single-family homes located on Wright Street. This picture is taken standing on 32nd Avenue, looking north towards the shopping center. This is one of the vacant pieces that was previously used as parking lot for Wells Fargo, and this is the western portion of that same parking lot. Again, you can see the grade change from the parking lot up to the area up top. This is looking south towards the entrance of the shopping center. The development site would be on the left side of the image. This is standing internally, looking east towards the old Chicago Building, and this paved area right here is that major interior drive that extends from 32nd up to 38th. This is looking southeast towards that retail building, and again, this paving in front is that major interior drive. And this is another view of the intersection, looking north from 32nd Avenue. So, the specific development plan has twelve pages in it, and I'm not going to look at each one. Some of them are technical documents that are sort of hard to read, so I've just picked out select pages, and we'll go through those. So, this is the first sheet of the plan set. It's what I call the declaration page, and it includes legal descriptions and signature blocks and notes about the zoning and so forth. It also shows the vicinity map down here on the bottom, which shows the fueling center in relationship to the detention area. This is an existing conditions map. You can see 32nd Avenue's down here, north is to the top, Youngfield's over here, Wright Court coming north from 32nd. The development area is outlined in red, and all of these areas, which include parking areas, landscaping of the buildings in this area, are to be demolished. So, this is a site plan rendering that was provided by the applicant. The proposed fueling station, and again, help orient you, 32nd Avenue down here, north is to the top. This is the major interior drive that extends north from 32nd Avenue. So the fueling station consists of nine double-sided dispensing stations with about a 6,800 square foot footprint for the canopy and a 180 square foot kiosk. Access is internal from the drive from 32nd Avenue, so we have one access point down here from that drive, which is a right-in, right-out only. We've got another access point towards the north end, which is a full-movement intersection, and then there's also an internal access which would allow the vehicle driver to go from the fueling station site up north behind the Chipotle, the noodles and Chipotle building. Let's see, parking and circulation are shown as green, and of course, they are positioned around the canopy and in the fueling station, and also for the detention pond, which is located over here. There were two sheets in the plan set that deal with photometrics. They provide foot candle readings at different times of the day during business hours and during overnight hours, so the first sheet is sort of a normal, the normal hours when the kiosk is opened, and those are generally from the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Once the kiosk becomes unmanned, which is from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., the lighting on the site goes to security lighting, which essentially eliminates, turns off some of the fixtures back here along the eastern side, which consequently reduces the foot candle readings on the eastern side of the canopy. This is a sheet of the landscape plan for the fueling station, and again, the landscaping around the fueling station, of course, is limited to the perimeter, and I would note that 32nd Avenue down here on the south end does not meet the current city standard for any sort of street trees. There's essentially no landscaping on that vacant piece down at the south, and so they are bringing the site up to standard with installation of a tree lawn. There's already an existing eight-foot wide sidewalk with street trees and so on and so forth. The western side of the property abuts the major interior drive, which is over here, and they are also landscaping in this area, too. They're showing a buffer strip that varies in width from about 40 feet to 25 feet, with an eight-foot separated sidewalk, and plant materials consisting of tree shrubs and so on. The second page of the landscape plan deals with the detention area. So again, north is to the top. This is the cul-de-sac bulb that extends north from 32nd, and this is actually the detention area itself. Like I say, there are some constraints on both of the sites because of the extreme grade changes, with about, I think, 15 feet of fall from the detention area up to that existing rear of the building, and it shows how they're having to do the terracing to make the pond be able to function. They also have the 50-foot wide, excuse me, waterline easement that's owned by Denver Water in this area, and that precludes them from planting any plant materials at that location. So where possible, they have added in street trees to provide buffering for those adjacent residences. One other note to point out is that there is existing curb gutter and sidewalk along the western half of Wright Street cul-de-sac bulb, and we are making a condition that they extend those improvements over to where their property line ends, right in this area. Okay, moving on, this is the elevation sheet from the plan set. It does show the facade elevations for the station and the kiosk. They are showing brick fascia on flat surfaces, essentially the canopy supports and the kiosk itself. There is no freestanding sign for the redevelopment, and instead they are just relying on some minimal wall signs on the canopy. So, this is the last sheet in the plan set, and what it represents is the elevation topographic issues that are happening on the site. There are two sections that are shown. One, that's sort of midway or on the northern portion of the canopy site, and that would be this representation right here, and it does show the canopy pad and then the terracing down to the detention pond, which is in this location. The other section is taken farther south, and it also shows and represents some of the grade change that occurs on the site. So included in this request is a variance to the zero to 20-foot build-to-line required for the front setback. Essentially, it is, the property is located in the Contemporary Overlay District, which requires a build-to from zero to 20 feet along any adjacent public street. So what they are showing and asking for is a 70-foot setback from the edge of the canopy to the 32nd Avenue right-of-way, and because of that, they do have a variance request as part of this. So, I am not going to go detailed through the variance criteria, but I will talk to you a little bit about the conclusions that we've drawn. First of all, we've concluded that the variance will not alter the essential character of the area. There are several buildings in the vicinity that were recently built that do not meet the build-to line, the most recent being the Wells Fargo Building, which is located at 3298 Youngfield. It's got a 60-foot setback from Youngfield, and the adjacent office building just to the southeast of this site has a 40-foot front setback. We have concluded that the project represents a substantial investment in the shopping center, and the city would like to see the property redeveloped as it is, and eyesore and underutilized, particularly those two lots that are adjacent to 32nd Avenue. The topography of the site provides challenges with the amount of fall between the fueling station pad and 32nd Avenue. Again, that's about 20 feet, and in order for internal access to function efficiently, we feel that the larger setback is appropriate, and again, while the two parcels along 32nd at some point might develop by themselves, it would be a better use of land to have them incorporated into the shopping center. We've concluded that approval of the variance request would not be detrimental to public welfare, injurious to neighborhood property or improvements. We've concluded that the request should not impact the amount of light or air, nor increase the danger of fire. We also feel like redevelopment of the site with the variance will have a positive impact on property values. And finally, staff has concluded that the proposal will generally be consistent with the goals of the Architectural and Site Design Manual, in that it will have internal connections with adjacent properties, increased pedestrian connections, buffering, and enhanced architectural So, I'm going to skip ahead to agency referrals and talk about those. All of the referral agencies that we contacted and that have responded are currently serving the property, and then they will be able to continue to do so with upgrades upon the redevelopment. So ConMutual Water has indicated that upgrades will be needed with the redevelopment. Wheat Ridge Fire will assess water supply, hydrant location, site access, and building layout at building permit. Northwest Lakewood sanitation has adequate capacity to serve with upgrades. Renewal Wheat Ridge has concluded that the proposal is consistent with the urban renewal plan. And finally, Wheat Ridge Public Works has reviewed a master drainage plan and a traffic study. The traffic study does indicate that warrants call for installation of a single signal on 32nd Avenue with the major interior drive, and both of those improvements would be required with construction of this project. I know that in the staff report, I indicated that the traffic signal be installed prior to CO, or at least at the time of CO. We're not sure we're going to be able to meet that schedule, and in that case, if that's what happens, we will enter into a development agreement with surety to ensure that as soon as the traffic signal is ready, that it can be installed. Finally, with improvements installed at the developer's expense, including, again, the drainage system for the southern portion of the site and the signal at 32nd Avenue, staff concludes, has made the following conclusions with regard to the criteria used to evaluate a specific development plan. First, we've concluded that the proposed SDP is consistent with the purpose of a plan development, to permit well-designed innovative developments, which might not be achievable under straight zone districts. We've concluded that the SDP is consistent with these goals by providing logical and compatible commercial development that's integrated into the shopping center. We've concluded that the SDP design intent was to provide a document which accommodated not only existing buildings, but also new redevelopment, and with the design care was taken to ensure they would be consistent with the architectural themes and design elements that are laid out in the ODP document. We have concluded that a fueling station is a designated permitted use in the ODP document. We've concluded that the design of the site has taken into consideration safe consolidated access and upgraded landscape design. We've concluded that all utility agencies can continue to serve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. And finally, staff has reviewed the site design and concludes that the proposal is generally consistent with the SDM, and for these reasons, we are giving a recommendation for approval of the specific development plan. There were two conditions that were included in your recommended motion, and so I would appreciate if those got included in any sort of motion for approval. So with that concludes the staff report. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thanks, Meredith. Questions from the commissioners? Let's start with, on this side with Commissioner Ohm. Do you have questions?
Yes, I have a couple. One is, is there a plat?
We are working on a consolidation plat with the applicant, and we've done a variety of things with them. We've worked with lease lines before, and we've also used platted property lines, so yes, we are in the process of getting that approved.
The reason I ask is I notice on the Ulta, there's several interior easements.
Yes.
And when I look at the other sheets, they're missing.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering, have those been vacated? Because there's-
They have not yet, because we have not completed the plat work, but yes, a lot of those will be vacated with the consolidation.
Okay. And then, what is the max slope for established?
I don't know that we have a standard for that. Normally, you know, if you're going to mow something, a four-to-one slope is preferable. Three-to-one is an absolute maximum.
Okay.
If this is going to be something that's going to let grow, then certainly a somewhat steeper slope could be done.
Yeah, there's a couple areas where it appears that it's very steep for establishing grass. And I can ask the applicant that once they come up. And I have those circled in case you want to see those, miss record, those two areas. Are there any required site triangles for the site? I'm specifically talking about the drive entry.
So which end?
Safety, the one coming off of 32nd.
Well, so are you talking about in or out?
Well, I would say that anything that's new, so the new landscaping-
Right. Well, we did, we did obviously take a look at site distance. Actually, cars exiting the shopping center would be exiting at this point, which is separated quite a bit from, because of the median and the one-way-in. But yes, we typically do look at site distance triangles.
Because there's none noted on the landscape plan. Typically, there should be like a safety triangle, site triangle, site distance. There's nothing on the landscape plan that calls that to attention.
We can double-check that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I had. Commissioner Olson, do you have questions?
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Tims?
Just a couple of questions for staff, please. Do you know when approximately this shopping center was first developed, or how old these buildings are?
Well, there's, my, the information I have is it was starting to be developed in the late 60s, like '69, which was right when the city incorporated. I don't think we did our first really zoning document until 1973. And then it was sort of a hodgepodge. So the buildings, you know, the owner representative would be able to answer that better than myself. But we've seen a lot of redevelopment, but you also have a lot of old structures on the property.
Okay. The proposed detention basin is fairly large. My question is, where's the existing detention?
There is-
It's everywhere, huh? Everywhere and anywhere, basically?
The potholes in the parking lot are the existing detention.
Okay.
If there are any potholes. So there's no existing stormwater facilities of that nature on the property now, right now.
And this is designed to accommodate not only this particular site, but future redevelopment on the southern third of the center? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. In terms of, just looking at the aerial, the overall aerial, this, looks like this main access point here on 32nd, it's a little bit offset to the street to the south. Was that discussed at all, especially if this traffic signal's going to go in there in the future? Was that discussed about realigning that somehow to make that a little safer, perhaps?
We've had a lot of discussions about that. And when we did our project on 32nd Avenue, we talked again about trying to do it. 32nd is so steep right there, it really starts dropping off. It's very hard to slide the driveway to the east and make it work, because then you have this, your cliff you're going down to get to 32nd. Shifting it to the west to get it lined up with Zenia makes that wiggle going in even more dramatic. And so the choices may just leave the access where it was. We had a lot of conversations about that over the last several years, but the choices may leave it where it is. And that's why Zenia has that pork chop in there. Zenia's basically a right-in, right-out street.
Okay. Thank you. And then, just a question about signage on the proposed station. So there are several signs proposed, symbols proposed on the canopy, including a gas price. There's several shown, there's two, I believe, shown on the kind of the center building, if you will. And there's a note that says no additional signage will be allowed, including those automated-
Yes.
-nice machines.
Right.
Does that also then include future temporary signs or things of that nature? Or is this basically referring to permanent?
Those were, are to address permanent signage.
Okay.
But I mean, what we don't want to see is the site cluttered up with A-frame signs and-
Sometimes little signs shot showing up about specials and things of that nature, right?
Right. We'd like to see as little of that as possible.
Okay. And the applicant's agreeable to that?
Yes.
That is all my questions for staff right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Kimsey, questions?
I just have one question. I had some questions that Scott addressed, but on sheet 12, which is, looks like a section B through the site, with the canopy up at top, there is an emergency overflow riprap. Is that into right? It looks like, is that emergency overflow for the retention pond?
Yes. Yeah, that's for, if the, something plugs the outlet, then it flows into right court. Yes.
I see, and then right court-
Flows down to 32nd, then down to Lena Gulch.
Gotcha.
Which is where the water pretty much goes today, so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dorsey, questions?
I have no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Weaver?
You had talked about some walkable space. Could you go back to the colorful one that we just had that we don't have here? Yes, thank you. So the sidewalks I'm seeing, they are just along 32nd, and then they go into, is there other walkable space? I'm just curious.
Well, not around, or, I mean-
Right, right, right.
There is around the site, but not internal to the site.
And there's no walkable access on the south side where the retention pond is? Is that all?
Over here.
Yeah, is that all fenced? Is that all?
I would presume it would be fenced, yes.
I'm just picturing people who are actually walking, or people younger than me, you know, trying to find ways up the back. And I was just curious. So when you say walkable space, you're talking about the sidewalk on the west and then the sidewalk?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Hmm, let's see if I have questions. I think you guys, the main concerns I had were just related to traffic. So I guess my one question would be, do you have any specifics on what the increase in traffic is anticipated to be? Because I know, you know, in the past, that the gas station at the Regency Center property was right there on the corner, which meant there was no increase in traffic on that internal drive. But now, obviously, we're going to get more on that internal drive. And I think, you know, that signalized intersection, just without any study, seems like a good idea. So I'm glad it's something that the city came into.
And actually, the existing traffic out there meets warrants, meets two of the warrants to have a signal put in. And that's without the addition of the fuel center.
I see.
You know, most of the people going to the fuel center are probably already in that shopping center. I don't have, remember all those numbers off the top of my head. The applicant's engineer may have those numbers. But, you know, it's the kind of thing that we haven't seen a revised traffic report for with the addition of the signal. So we're waiting on that, and we should have that in within a few weeks or a month or so. And we'll be looking at that as we go along. But we anticipate the signal's going to help things tremendously at that intersection and alleviate any of the increase in traffic with the fuel center being there.
And would that signal be activated with a pressure pad or?
We'll have video cameras like what we do elsewhere in the city.
Okay. So it'll recognize cars and bicycles?
Yeah, on 32nd, we've got a couple of bike lanes near there, and 32nd's a big bike route. So we may go ahead and paint little boxes like we did at 32nd Youngfield. If the bike parks here, it'll pick you up. We actually have some of those boxes on the ground. So we'll look at that. But yeah, certainly trying to accommodate all those users at that intersection.
Right. And Meredith, you said the sidewalks were eight feet?
Yes.
Okay. And they're obviously ramped at the intersection? Okay. All right. Great. Well, thanks. Unless anyone has any other questions, why don't we hear from the applicant? And you guys can all come up and talk, or one of you can talk, or whatever. I just need a name and an address for you before you give your presentation.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much. Thank you, Meredith.
Oh, and please make sure you speak into the microphone for the transcript. Thanks.
How's that?
Perfect, thanks.
My name is Will Damrath with Regency Centers. 8480 East Orchard Road in Greenwood Village. I'm not the applicant. I'm the regional officer for Regency Centers, and we're the owner of the shopping center. And I just wanted to take a minute to introduce the applicant and our team. Meredith did a fantastic job. I don't need to rehash any of the details. But I thought it might help just give you some historical context of where we are with this project and some of the other background of what we're currently working on at the property and in informal discussions at the property. The, I think I heard one question about the year of the construction of these buildings, and it did happen organically over many years. It did start in the late 60s. I believe the Walmart building was a Wilco at one point in time. I also was told there was a hotel up on 32nd at one point in time. Yeah. A guy named Jerry Beal purchased the property and redeveloped it and put the Walmart in years ago. The ownership of several of the parcels through the shopping center was fractured through multiple private investors. Regency acquired the asset back in 2005 with an institutional partner, and we've been managing the asset since that time. And I've been working for at least the last four or five years to try and consolidate ownership of parcels we don't own that are contiguous, because quite frankly, it's messy. The, you know, we wouldn't develop a shopping center if we owned all this land the way it is today. There's circulation problems, there's drainage issues. That fractured ownership has created, you know, barriers to being able to solve those problems. So I'm, you know, really excited to kind of talk about this being the first step to, number one, solving that drainage issue, which will serve a basin of about eight acres on the entire south. Behind Applejack, they have a mechanical sump that collects rainwater, and it pumps it out to a location that's not ideal in the center. And, you know, so this will start helping fix that issue. In terms of, it sounds like there's some detailed questions, and we've got the engineering staff here for the applicant. They'll introduce them and be able to answer some of the specifics on the site planning. But, you know, we're excited. We're looking to redevelop other parcels we've acquired, and we'll be, you know, looking forward to either being an applicant ourselves for those proposals, or having a tenant that we sign a lease with coming to use the applicant for different portions in the future. And with that, I'll introduce our applicant and our tenant, Mike Scheckel with King Supers. And just also for backdrop, we've got about 15 stores with King Supers in, just in my region in Colorado. So we do a lot of business with them and have had a lot of productive meetings with staff. So thank you.
My name is Michael Scheckel with King Supers, 65 Tahone Street in Denver, 80223. And, yes, S-C-H-E-C-K-E-L. So I'm here just kind of give a brief overview of the King Supers, answer a few questions. To answer your question directly, our store opened in 1965. I have no idea if anyone opened at the same time, or what other buildings were in existence at that time. But you had asked a specific question when it opened, if it's 1965. So as Will was discussing, we've been talking about this project to add fuel at this store for quite some time, and it is wrapped within several other issues and other projects for redevelopment. And overall, staff has been great to work with. I want to definitely give your staff a pat on the back. There are a myriad of issues within each project that have had to have been addressed. I'm sure you can all appreciate the difficulties of redevelopment and new development within a development like this. And they've gone relatively speaking, pretty smoothly, and everyone has worked very well to try and find mutually beneficial results on this. And we think this project will be an excellent addition to the shopping center, this particular store, and also to the city of Wheat Ridge. As you folks probably know, from our existing fuel center in Wheat Ridge, fuel has been a huge add-on program for not just King Supers and City Market in Colorado, but for Kroger in general. We've had some huge success. We like to think that we've kept the price of gas in check, so to speak. Competition is always good. And there is somewhat of a void in this particular area, at this particular intersection. Over the last few years, you folks probably remember losing the Amaco and then also losing the Conoco. And so there's a tremendous amount of traffic already at this intersection. We don't anticipate a significant increase in traffic with this. It is, fuel is a convenience-related retail item, so it generally picks from the traffic that's already going by, or the traffic that is already circulating in the shopping center or one of the tenants or our own customers, that type of thing. So we think, again, we think it's an excellent addition for the shopping center, for King Supers, for the city. You know, comparing this to other fuel centers in the Kroger system and King Super system, this is our latest and greatest generation of fuel centers with the nine pumps. We call them MPDs, multi-product dispensers, kind of an industry term. And it should actually, this particular design for this particular, I'm not an engineer, but by comparison, should help the overall flow of the shopping center. And the traffic engineer that's done a lot of analysis on this in conjunction with some of the other larger issues wrapped around the other projects, et cetera, I think overall did a very good job trying to incorporate everyone's priorities for this, to try and give it as best of an upgrade as possible. And it does accommodate our newest fuel center design, and we think it's very complimentary. Anything specific that you want to ask? I'll defer for the engineering, the photometrics, things like that, drainage, to Carl Schmidt line with Galloway, or the engineer for Regency, Eric Scheckel, or Matthew DeHame as well from Galloway. This is, we've got enough brain power in the front row here to launch a rocket. It just kind of is indicative of how complex this project is, not just our fuel center, but in the overall manner as well. But at the end of the day, I think we, I think everyone can agree that it's a very beneficial project. And so I'll kind of open up any, open up for any questions or anything that anyone has. And if I get stumped, I will hand it over in a second.
Any questions for Mr. Scheckel, Commissioner Weaver, Dorsey? Anybody? Oh, you do? Okay. Go ahead.
My question is really, again, about drainage. You mentioned that there's a pump behind Applejack, maybe it was the other gentleman.
Is there a lift station? Is that what?
A pumping station behind Applejack? And that's, that water heads toward 32nd Avenue?
I believe so. I think the fall is 32nd.
Currently, there's a low spot behind Applejack, and it's a dead-end cul-de-sac where they load.
Okay.
And that collects water. It's actually off the page here. And there's a mechanical sump that pumps it directly to the north, and it actually daylights that rainwater into the parking lot. It over, it flows over the parking lot into the drainage system, which then ends up in these inverts, or these storm drains that then end up in 32nd, that then go down to Lena Gulch today. But the way it gets there is not ideal. And so the ultimate plan is to size this pond, and it has been sized, to accommodate that water when we redevelop that into the center. We'll be able to tie it in here and eliminate that problem.
I see. So this pond is really for the entire site for drainage? The south portion of the site?
Eight acres of south of the site. So from the frontage road all the way to right court, and probably up to about the edge of King Supers on the north.
I see. Okay. Thank you. And the other question about the drainage is, there's no, is there a change in elevation from the 50-foot easement for the water to the residences on the northeast? Or is that, is that the same grade? Okay. All right. That's all.
Commissioner Tims?
Just a question, either maybe for Kings and maybe for Regency. On this particular, I guess the outline development plan on sheet two, it's listed, I guess there's one, two, three, four, five different future SDP areas, and this is one of them. I'm just wondering if you could maybe, for the commission and for the public, talk about why right here versus perhaps one of these others, or where a previous gas station was, et cetera, like that? What was kind of the thinking, maybe either from Kings or from Regency, on how this site was kind of narrowed down and selected?
Right. Well, I'll take a quick stab at it, and anyone, feel free to correct me at any time if I get something wrong. But there have been, this is a very successful store, as you folks know. Any store that's still in business after 1965 is doing well. And so for several years, we've been trying to figure out how to add fuel, just as we've added fuel in other locations across the country. The analysis went from the hard corner. There were some discussions with Wells Fargo with some of the things they did- There were some discussions with Wells Fargo with some of the things they did. This was driven to some extent by Regency envisioning this as a new pad. And then it started to come into focus after that. But the, you know, the, the visibility, the access, the proximity to the store, those types of things, all factor into it. And with the other uses, the other plans, and the other projects within this, the shopping center, the cobbling together of some of the lots and things like that, this site was settled upon for all of those reasons, because it fit into the best flow overall of the shopping center, taking into consideration things like drainage, access, visibility, landscaping, safety, et cetera.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Rome, questions?
Yes, I have a couple. What is the, are there any, for the native grass areas, is there any slopes that exceed four to one? Because I'm seeing an area that looks, appears to have contra 91, 92, 93 just right on top of each other.
Right. I think when we were discussing it earlier, they, they were flipping through that at the same time, and I think everything that they've reviewed so far, and we'll double check it, but everything that's been reviewed so far sitting here is three to one.
Is three to one?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the, on the photometric plan?
I'm sorry, four to one.
Minimum four to one? Okay, thank you. On the, on the photometric plan, how is the, how are the photometrics determined as far as, are they, and I'm not that familiar with them, are, are they determined based on a flat site or do they actually take grade and slope into consideration?
Yes. The measurements are done all over at different points, under the canopy, outside the canopy, to try and accomplish the no-leak type situation where you don't get the bleed of the under-canopy lighting out into the street or across the street or onto neighboring properties, things like that. So those measurements are taking, are taken physically at, at other different places to make sure, obviously, right now they're estimates, but they will be taken in the follow-up after it's open to make sure that they are all within the ranges that they were anticipating.
But when they run the, the design software, is it based on flat? Or is it based on?
That is a good question.
Is it based on topography?
It is based on the grade. It is intermingled with the topography.
Yeah. The reason I, the reason I bring that up, because if that's the case, you did a great job on the photometrics, because as we all know, if, you know, if I put a lamp on top of this table here, it's going to have a larger cone radius on that side versus my side. And from what I can see, what I do is I highlight like over the .1, and it pretty much falls right at the edge of the detention. And that's during, that's not even the, the security lights, that's just the regular. And then there's nothing after that. And then the security lights, there's even less. And then it looks like you placed a couple large pine trees on the, on those two lights that are on the east side. So if there is anything at all, which it really isn't, it's already screening those. So that, that looks good. Thank you.
Yes. Lighting is becoming a, a much bigger issue, and there have been several discussions about it. Again, credit to staff for being flexible, working with the different, different issues to, to resolve it. But here in Colorado in particular, just from my personal experience, and I, this is the 3rd Division in Kroger that I've worked for, Boulder has the toughest lighting in the country that I'm aware of. And it is an issue, it should be an issue, quality of life, life issue, but it's also a security issue as well. So it's a very difficult balance, a very delicate balance, to get the proper lighting so people can see which credit card they're pulling out of their purse or their wallet, which denomination, the money that they're paying with, whatever the case may be, reading the pump itself, also having enough security. There is a ratio of low light and crime that, you know, is a balance as well that we have to pay attention to in our parking lots and things like that. Lighting, to your, to your comment, definitely is a hot point, and, and there was a lot of consideration. And I know that, that our people and your people went over a lot of different scenarios to make sure that it was resolved in an effective manner. And I appreciate the, appreciate you noticing that.
One, one last question. Is there any, is there any concern, this is kind of a safety thing, that if the detention fills up and it's dark, is there any chance, and it looks like you could probably walk out of it anyway, that there, there shouldn't be any safety issue with that, should there?
Not, not that we have anticipated at this point. There's, there, there was some discussion on the walking areas and things like that, and because that area on the south side of the detention area does not have a direct walking path, we don't anticipate people wandering. If they're, you know, you might get some kids that purposely are trying to run up the grass hill or something, they're probably going to know it's there, they're not going to be impaired and accidentally fall down it, at least, you know, any reasonable anticipation of that. So that, I think, has factored into part of it, but at this point in time, we do not see any reasonable possibility of that happening.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. I just want to say, I appreciate the improvements in the landscaping right on the north side of 32nd there, south of the proposed development that you guys are proposing. I think it will be a nice addition. It's, you know, another reason why we've got those specifications encoded here. And I think that, that part of it looks really nice. I did have a question really quickly, just when we're talking about lighting. What is the sort of functional difference between the normal lighting scenario and the security lighting? Is it different lights? Is it turning down the lights that are there? Is it like, you know, arc lights that come on instead of the normal lights? Tell me, you know, paint that picture for me.
Right. The security lighting is more of kind of a threshold for us. Once we get to a certain threshold of, of lighting that, that we feel is adequate so to, to deter crime, to, you know, make sure that people don't trip when they're walking through the parking lot, things like that. Then we've got other lighting with the canopy and the focus lights and things like that onto the pump that are for, for, for business. So there's, there, there's not, there's not really a separation between the security, it's kind of a blend. You have to have a certain amount of lighting, for example, at your front door of the King Supers, so people don't trip on their way in. But then, as you go out into the parking lot, it, the, the lighting is at a certain level, more so for security for the cars and things like that, so you can see which car key you're, you're putting in. And that's kind of, that's why you see a little bit lower threshold of, of lighting in a parking lot versus at the front door type of thing.
I guess my, my question really speaks more to the hours that the, that the gas station won't be operating after 10:00.
Right.
10:00 PM.
And that's, that's not so much for security, for, for the neighbors, so that we don't have the bleed late at night shining in someone's kitchen window or, or back room window, something like that. You know, if there is a problem, we are, we are and have been flexible with our lighting programs even after our fuel centers have opened, even after our stores have opened. If there's a particular wall pack light, for example, in the back of the store that was positioned and we thought it, it wouldn't have a clear view into someone's window and the neighbor alerts us or alerts the city or someone that this thing is shining in my, my house 24 hours a day, we'll move it or we'll screen it or something like that. So, you know, this pad is not built yet, but, you know, as, as good as everyone is on the engineering side and the architectural side and the planning side, if we may have to make adjustments, we certainly will.
Yeah. That's why this is called a plan.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Right. Okay. Yeah. If you want to, yeah, just give us your name and address and if you have more information, that'd be great.
Name is Carl Schmidtlein with Galloway and Company. Last name spelled S-C-H-M-I-D-T-L-E-I-N. And address is 6162 South Willow Drive, Suite 320 Greenwood Village, Colorado. So anyways, I thought I'd, I know we've kind of talked through a number of questions already, but the one that was at hand that Mike was just quickly talking about, and I need, may need Meredith's help here. We, working with Meredith in the last couple of weeks, she had asked if we could put together a, an exhibit with our site lighting design professional that put together our photometric plan that helped to show the difference between the, what we're calling the regular lighting that we would have between the hours of basically dusk until 10:00 PM. And then, of course, what we're calling security lighting, that would occur from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. But the difference between the two, essentially, and how we've worked it with staff and, and talking through it. Okay. Here's my, looking for my mask cursor here. So essentially, what you see here, there's a, there's a sight light right here. You can see a bit of a bright spot here. There's another sight light here, another here, another here, and one more here. So what we are proposing on this back Easterly property, or the edge of the, the fuel facility here, is we're turning off this sight light completely at 10:00 PM and then also turning off this light right here. So really, it's the two sight lights that are closer to that residential exposure area, but we are leaving the one light on right here, basically in the location of where those tanks are, if in case they are unloading fuel. They're not going to be unloading fuel late at night, but in the winter hours, it does get dark sometimes 4:00, 4:30, and they may be doing a drop at that point. So that's why we wanted to ensure that we kept that light on there. And so when Mike's talking about more security, safety, it's really to have some level of lighting in those areas still past 10:00 PM and before 6:00 AM in the morning, so.
Okay. Great. That's very helpful. Any questions? Further questions by the commission? Okay. Great. Well, thanks for that additional information. Would anyone else from the applicant's group like to say anything more before we take some public comment? Okay. Great. Thanks very much. We do have some people who signed our little sheet here. If, now, we've, we've got three people who signed up either in favor or in opposition. If you'd like to come up and speak, you're certainly welcome to. Don't feel obligated. If your questions have been answered by the, statements made by either the staff or the applicant, that's, that's great. If you, if you'd like to come up and ask questions of the commission, that we can then direct to either staff or applicant, whoever's appropriate, we'd love, we'd love to have you come up and do that. Or if you just have an opinion you'd like to express on this matter, please come up. The first person we've got on the list is Carl Schmidtlein. That's you. Okay. Anything more to say? Okay. Trevor Hall. If you can just come up and give your name and address for our transcript, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Hall. I'm at 3155 Wright Court. And Hall is H-A-L-L. So thank you, commissioners and applicants and everything. I'm a fairly new resident of Wheat Ridge, and I'm also a fairly new father, so I'm going to do the exact same thing tonight as I did with the first two and jump right into things, I guess. So I apologize for any naivete that I might express. A lot of my questions, concerns have been addressed through the conversation, so thank you for a lot of that. My initial, I, I guess I'm representing the Wright Court side on our neighbors on the, what would be the south side of 32nd Street, which you don't see on the diagram. With conversations with our neighborhoods, a lot of our concerns were not only with the lighting, which I will be happy to report that shouldn't be an issue, so kudos, but the traffic is also a major issue, especially with that interior intersection. Now, I, I think we're all happy to know that there will be some sort of traffic signal put in place there. Couple of issues, I, I haven't seen a traffic survey, and I don't have one to show. I don't know if there's one available. I would really like to see where that is and share it with my neighbors. The issue with the, we see on the south side of 32nd Street there is that those intersections are not perpendicular. And so when you are trying to make a left, especially around 8:00 AM on a school day, it can be very daunting. And when you're trying to make a left about 3:30, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock at night during rush hour, it can also be very daunting. Now, it's my understanding, after I did have a conversation with Mark about this, just to get some clarification, that there's going to be a three-point traffic signal put in place, but that still doesn't issue taking a left while you're heading north out of Wright Court or Wright Street. So I didn't know if the traffic survey had taken any of that into consideration. Would like to have that addressed if, if at all possible. The other traffic issue I'd also want, would like to see if it could be addressed is what would the traffic issues be with the proposed 400 new homes going in on the Golden Side and the Applewood Golf Course? I would think that would increase traffic, and I don't know exactly where that is in Golden's planning, but I would think that 400 new family homes would increase traffic with King Supers being the only grocery store in that vicinity. So I would like to know if that was, would be addressed as well. On the landscaping, the landscaping really looks, looks great. My only concern is when is maturity of these trees? What's the timeframe? It looks like when they are planted, especially the big pines, the Austrian pines, they're planting about five to seven feet. Proposed, I think I saw 50 feet of maturity. How, you know, how long is that going to take to reach maturity? That's a, that was the other one. And, and one of the gentlemen, the applicants noted that visibility, access, and proximity is the reason they chose this exact spot for the gas station. I don't think you would talk to anybody on Wright Court and would say, "We don't want a gas station." Everybody thinks like a gas station is a good idea. We've been wanting, I know people have been in the neighborhood for a really long time. We're hoping that they could get a gas station. I think they're very much questioning the position, the location of the gas station, especially when one was just knocked down, what, a year or two ago? So it's, it's a little bit frustrating for that, but the visibility, access, and proximity to the store with the trees with maturity, I don't know what the visibility for the store will be once those trees reach maturity. The access is certainly an issue. You'll see in the diagram up on the screen, the four cars and the interior, that's definitely what you typically will see on any given day, because it looks like that red car is going to hit with that other car taking a right onto 32nd. That's, that's real, that's, really happens at 5 o'clock. So the access is an issue. Now, if you take a left into the interior drive into the gas station, and you can only, you can take a right now, I don't know if, if that's, if that's an issue as far as the access, but getting out could also be an issue. If somebody doesn't know to go up to that northwest corner to take their left and said they go into that southwest and they are forced to take a right, they're just getting more traffic. At least that's my, that would be my layman interpretation of the design. In the proximity of the store, I, I've seen plenty of King Super gas stations, City Market gas stations, that are literally across the street from the grocery store. So I guess I, I'm not, you know, I'm not familiar with the operations, what the, you know, the needs of the gas station being right there, but I know from experience that I've seen plenty of grocery store gas stations pretty far away from the grocery store, so. So those are my questions, concerns, and I, I'd really like any of that to be addressed if at all possible.
Great. Let's see. Let's start with, thanks very much for, for coming and voicing those concerns. I guess the first question is, let's see. Mark, as far as any sort of traffic survey, I know you said you don't have numbers here. Is there a chance that that can be made publicly available whenever it, it is?
Yeah, we can once it's finalized. It's just not fin, we haven't seen a revised version with the traffic signal in there yet, which is, is going to be a game changer as far as what the level of service of that intersection, so. And we did not look at, at, at any of the level of service of those streets on the south intersecting 32nd. That wasn't part of the scope of their study. Their, their scope was just that entrance that they've got there.
And as far as anticipated additional traffic from those additional homes that are being proposed at what is now the Applewood Golf Course, is, is that projection, is there some sort of projection we can give to that as far as how that would impact the interior traffic in those terms?
That's on my list of things to do. We, we received a referral from Jefferson County a week or so ago, and that's due on Wednesday. We received a referral from Jefferson County a week or so ago, and that's due on Wednesday. And I hope to review that traffic study on Monday or Tuesday. We're very concerned with, with the impact of those 400 homes on all the work that we've just done at the intersection. So we're going to be, we're going to be looking at that study very closely and if necessary, provide very meaningful comments back to Jefferson County concerning that.
Excellent, okay.
Just, we'd love for all those people to come shop at our King Supers and Walmart and everything else, but understand, understand the impacts.
Okay. As far as, I guess these questions might be better addressed for the applicant. The length of time until maturity for those, for those trees and the other larger landscaping, do you have an estimate on that?
I think five to 10 years, depending on the tree, trees. You know, some of the, some of the evergreen type trees will have some utility year-round, right at the very beginning. Obviously, some of the deciduous trees will take some time to canopy out before, and that'll probably be five to 10 years before they're at full maturity. But they'll have some utility initially, especially some of the evergreen trees.
Okay. And could you speak a little more in depth on, with regards to the selection of this particular location for the gas station as opposed to one of the other potential SDP areas? You know, for example, you know, we were all used to having that one station on the corner for quite some time. You know, to the layman, that might, that might make more sense because of the ease of access from those two major streets. Maybe you can speak, speak to the gentleman's concerns about that.
Absolutely, I'll chat a little bit about some of the off-site that the, that the neighbor referenced, because we do have some fuel centers that are off-site from the shopping center, separate ownership, across the street from, from the existing store. The Walgreens on the hard corner, that used to be the Amoco, was vigorously pursued by us, and Walgreens paid a lot more money. They make a lot more, a lot more money selling drugs than we do selling gas. So that was the off-site question for our fuel center. For the onsite stuff, with, with regards to the shopping center, I'll let Will kind of address that specifically.
Thanks.
Thank you. First of all, thanks for the comments. Those are some very thoughtful comments. A lot of times, we don't get comments that specific and thoughtful. You've, you've thought about what you're looking at a lot, and, and I'll try and hit, remind me if I missed some of them, but going back to what Mark said and staff, when the, there was some federal money appropriated if you had shovel-ready projects. I'm sure we all remember that, back several years ago. And, and at that time, we spent a lot of time with Tim, who was running the project for the city regarding where the ultimate signal location and drive location should be. A lot of open meetings, we kind of, we moved it down, we lined it up, we moved it up. We studied all that in depth. At the end of the day, the best place for it was to leave it, for all the reasons that he mentioned, grade stacking, queuing, progression along the road. Unfortunately, the design of the traffic signal was not shovel-ready at the time you guys improved 32nd. And so, there's no secret that, you know, we didn't know until we actually got the traffic study that, that the current condition meets warrants to have one. But I think in discussions with the staff and kind of owning the center for 10 years and looking at it, you could tell that, you know, that's probably a good idea, which is why when it was brought up during this application, we don't object to it. I think the resident was mentioning being further to the east, making a left heading west. And I believe that, you know, without having the traffic study in front of me, but if you install a signal there and you have a cycle and a progression that's interrupted, you are going to create a, an opening for that left turn movement to be able to be made. So I think that improves that condition ultimately. If we need to get specific in the study, I'm sure we can look at that and answer that question specifically. The question about why here, quite frankly, it's the best place for it, given all our analysis of all those other areas, for a number of reasons. I mean, there is a bit of a love-hate with fuel. It needs to be bright, it needs to be safe, and therefore, it needs to be designed a certain way. However, the grade was working in our favor to create this detention pond. The detention pond being in this location works in our favor to create a buffer between single-family residential and retail uses in the center. And I think we did a lot of work to landscape that heavily, because we hear that loud and clear that, you know, it is a need and a service for the residents, but, but we need to buffer the visibility of it, especially at night with lighting. And lastly, I think, to speak to the internal trips, I think Mike touched on it. You know, King Super sees a huge number of existing customers that use that fuel. I can't speak to the breakdown of how many non-store customers are going to use fuel. Obviously, with a signal in this location, it's going to get used heavily. But, you know, I believe there's an opportunity here for you to actually decrease some of the traffic volume at this intersection, because those people that are already at the store and have already been into the center will then stop and get fuel. And therefore, reducing a second trip to get out on the roadway and go get fuel somewhere else. So those are just touching at a high level on some of the thought process we went, we went through on this project.
Great, thank you. Mark, just, Mark, just a follow-up. The, the light, the signalized intersection that has been considered there, in addition to cameras, is, will there be some sort of cycle as well for, you know, that sort of timing maybe for residences to get that opening?
Yeah, we're going to have, we're going to have to, because it's with, it's around 600 feet from the signal at 32nd Young Field, which is about the minimum distance. You've got to have signals apart, which, it still works. We'll have that coordinated together with that other signal. And so, you know, the, it'll be resting on green for 32nd Avenue most of the time, but when someone triggers that coming out of the shopping center, it'll, it'll cycle over to red. And there'll be a brief instance when, when the people coming out still have a red and the people on 32nd have a red, that, that in theory, you should be able to have a nice gap to be able to pull out and go left. Now, that'll depend on how much the westbound traffic is queued up at the light also, but it's always challenging to turn out left during rush hour, anywhere, especially on 32nd. So, but this, there's a potential this might help, help that with, by creating those gaps with, with the signal being this close to Wright Court.
As a cyclist who gets, gets out there or who has to go on 32nd, I sympathize with the residents and the people who are trying to get out of there. So, okay, I think that answers that question. Did, did I cover everything, Mr. Hall, all the questions? Did I, did we miss anything?
Sorry, just regarding the intersection with the proposed light, will there be a crosswalk from the north side to connect the north side and the south side for pedestrian traffic there as well?
You know, we haven't seen the proposal, but, but certainly, from the city standpoint, we think that'd be a good idea. Maybe it'll just be on one side of that light to help get, get the traffic and have the pedestrians not impact the signal as much, but we'll look at that.
Great. Okay. We do have one more person who's signed up to speak, but before that, I'd like to call for a brief five-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 8:25. Thank you. I'm going to go to the next question. 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 Got a couple more people who would like to speak. On my list here, I have Roberta Rivera. If you would like to come up and say something, you may. If not, that's okay too. Uh, yeah, if, yeah, please come on up, state your name and address, and give us your thoughts.
My name's Tiffany Manzo, M-A-N-Z-O, and my address is 12495 West 32nd Avenue. So I'm just on the east side of the Wright Court cul-de-sac. And I'm just curious if we know what sort of chemicals and contaminants are going to be in this pond, and how often we expect it to emergency overflow into my yard. I also am curious, even if that does happen, if anyone is responsible for cleaning that up. And if you're out there on the weekends, there's a lot of people that use the stairways to get into that shopping center. It's a really busy walking path for the neighborhood. And I'm just worried that they haven't looked into keeping that open, because I don't think as many people will walk along 32nd, especially with families and kids.
Okay, let's, thank you. Let's ask Mr. Westberg about, briefly, just about wastewater and stormwater in general.
So, so we think it's on the parking lot, will be in the pond. And we inspect, we inspect all the ponds at least once a year to make sure they're still functioning properly, and also to make sure they're being maintained and cleaned out and those kind of things. I would certainly expect the shopping center to, as part of the regular maintenance, to be mowing this pond and doing the things they need to do down there. So as far as contaminants and stuff, you know, again, anything that falls in the parking lot will end up in the pond. And as part of the purpose of the pond is to clean the water a little bit, hopefully a lot, before it heads on downstream into Lena Gulch. So, so by putting the pond in, we're going to have, we should have a better situation at Lena Gulch than we do today.
So not necessarily as cleansing as a strict regimented, like wetlands program, but, but that vegetation and soil will help to keep some of that?
Yeah, so this pond has a water quality component in the body. The first stage of the pond will be water quality. So the water in that part will be held for 40 hours. It drains out slowly, very similar to the pond that's across the street at the MCPN Development. I park over there, so I walk by it every day. You know, we get a rain, it fills up, and then it drains down over about a two-day period. And so what that does is it lets all the sediment settle out and a lot of the stuff settle out, and then the vegetation's bottom of the pond, hopefully, takes care of a lot of those pollutants and things and grabs those so it doesn't continue on downstream. So, so again, this pond will sort of scrub the water as it, as it heads downstream, especially during the smaller storm events.
Okay, and I'm not sure if this question's more appropriate for the applicant or, or for you guys. Just as far as the capacity of that, that detention pond?
The goal will be the emergency overflow spillway is just that. It's for an emergency and it will never, ever be used. If we get a 500-year event, or if the orifice in the pond somehow gets plugged, then that emergency overflow spillway. I've, I've seen ponds that have been in place for years and water's never, ever gone over the spillway. So, so hopefully, water never goes over the spillway would be the, would be the hope. But all things go wrong sometimes in drainage, and so you want to have that emergency overflow just in case, you know, somebody throws a basketball down and it plugs up the pipe or something like that happens.
It just, it, a question for the applicant. It looks like the contour I'm looking at on page 12, just because it's the one that I have handy, you've got contours on some of these other plan pages. Looks like there's about a nine-foot elevation differential between the floor of that detention area and the crest of where that would be. Is that correct?
So, good question. Referring to page 12, essentially where the outfall structure is located at the far east end of that pond. Here's our cursor. So that outlet structure is located approximately in this location here. So as you go up to that outlet structure- So as you go up to that outlet structure from the bottom of the pond area, it's two, three, four, five, six feet to that outlet structure in that area. But the pond is designed for the 100-year storm, so this will be a significant improvement to what's there today where there is no pond. So this will be an improvement to that. As mentioned earlier, it does serve as, from a water quality measure as well, so it is going to improve the stormwater that's currently coming from the, you know, southerly one-third of that overall shopping center. So that'll be another significant improvement. But in, in that rare chance that the outlet structure is plugged, or if it exceeds that 100-year event, the water will overflow over the, the riprap area and into Wright Street, and then down into 32nd, which is where the water goes today. The other thing I wanted to just point out, Regency as a company, as part of their operations, they do inspect their outlet structures every quarter, so every three months they inspect those. So it's more than once a year, but that's just something that they do as, as managers of a number of shopping centers that they have, not just here in the Denver area, but around the country.
Okay, great. Thank you. So just to clarify, Mark, the, the purpose for that, when we talk about a water quality feature, that, that sort of slow drain timeframe that allows certain particulates and other heavier-than-water materials to settle down, settle out before, before that drainage takes place, is that part of the function?
Yeah, and the structure design such, even things that are floating will mostly be left behind in the pond, and, and won't really escape, if you will, and head downstream. So it's a, it's a very sophisticated structure, they're following the designs that Urban Drains and Flood Control District do, and they work really well at, at cleaning up the stormwater before it hits downstream.
Okay, great. Did that answer your question? Okay, wonderful. Would anyone else like to come up and address any comments? Yes? The pathway. And we're talking about the pathway on Wright Court, was that your concern? Would you like to speak to that? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I had another resident who lives just beyond Wright Court to the north bring up a very similar issue, and I've thought about it a lot. Currently, today, the, the proposal here, I think, does, does two things for you. I don't know if I have a pointer, or not, here it is, okay. The, the building we currently have is obsolete. We've actually had a lot of panhandling issues with a vacant building back there, and the fact that it's subterranean and below grade, and there's stairwell and some access and corridors, and so, you know, that's just one of the reasons that we've got this obsolete space to kind of demolish that building and reconfigure and redesign everything. This easement that Denver Water has is, is very unusual. This area right here is, it's actually a 75-foot easement, and we own a lot of shopping centers and dedicate a lot of easement rights to different parties. The, the easement rights that Denver Water has on this particular 75-foot easement that runs through the entire center are, it's almost like we don't own the property. They are, basically have the right to do anything they want within that easement area, and we would have to replace it at our cost. Now, politically, with Denver Water and a $90 million project, they're clearly not going to just run roughshod over, but we don't have a lot of rights to make improvements and create a connection through that area, although I would not necessarily philosophically be opposed to that. I think the design currently, as proposed, provides a new one and a better one along 32nd Avenue than asphalt paving to a sidewalk to the street. We've got now a nice wide sidewalk and a very, very nicely landscaped area. So, you know, our intent would be to replace whatever's going on with this new connection along 32nd. I can commit to, you know, studying a way to make a connection back there, although we don't have shop fronts facing the Wright Court side, and so you'd be funneling people into the center, kind of to the back service area of the building. So I think from, from an operation and a retail perspective, and, you know, we would prefer that pedestrian traffic to come along 32nd, to come up into the center using the public sidewalks that have been created, and, and try and create those, those landscaped areas that feel safe. So that's all I would say. We, we did not intentionally recreate or create a new connection through there for those reasons.
Yeah, so just to reiterate, the, the space that's to the northwest of that, of the development area, that is technically still part of the easement there, yeah, up in there, that's currently parking for the retail?
Yeah, we've got six tenants in this building, but, but all of the front doors are along this edge of the building, and you've got kind of dumpster enclosures, and electrical service back here, and employee parking, and so, you know, we could create a connection, it'd allow you to walk into the center, but it really doesn't bring a pedestrian to a, you know, retail front, bringing it through that area.
Because right now, as I, as I recall, there's, there's no way to actually drive from the current parking lot to the, to the south of, say, where the Noodles &amp; Company is, to this back lot here, yeah?
Yeah, we feel that's important for a lot of the traffic issues and circulation through the center, although that's kind of an employee parking area. It does connect about 200 feet up here to the fronts of the other retail buildings that face south, so it still functions, I think that's a positive connection. And again, if that's an area that, you know, we feel compelled to study a little bit more, we'd be willing to do it, but we, we don't have that connection proposed from Wright Court up through there.
Okay, all right, thank you. Does that answer your question? All right. Would anyone else like to come up and comment or ask questions? Great, okay. Thank you all for your comments and testimony and whatnot. I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing and entertain discussions and motions and whatnot by the commissioners.
One question I did have for, for Meredith, do we need to have any conditions on the, for vacating easements in site triangles, or is that something that staff can administratively?
That's something staff can take care of.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve case number WZ-14-14 and WA-15-05, request for approval of a specific development plan with a setback variance on property located at 12525 West 32nd Avenue for the following reasons. The proposal is consistent with the city's guiding documents, including the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy envisioned Wheat Ridge and the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan. Number two, the proposed SDP is consistent with the approved ODP document. Number three, all requirements for an SDP have been met. Number four, the criteria used to evaluate a variance has been met. Number five, the criteria used to evaluate an SDP has been met. Number six, the proposed SDP will result in the redevelopment of the southern portion of the shopping center with the following conditions. Number one, additional information be provided by the developer to demonstrate the difference in regular lighting and security lighting. Number two, public improvements along the Wright Court cul-de-sac be extended to the eastern point of ownership along the cul-de-sac about 25 feet.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion of the motion?
I think, the only thing I want to discuss is just the, on that back portion, looking at that, I think if there's a road back there, it would, I think it would, kind of, it definitely would take away some of the parking. I feel that it probably would not be very safe, there's probably not lighting back there. It, it's, it's not a good, I just think it's not a good connection that we should try to make, so that would be my recommendation.
Any other discussion? All right, please, please vote on the motion.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, again, I'd like to thank everybody, applicant, staff, members of the public who came out to discuss this with us, it's all very appreciated. We'll move on to our next case. Case number ZOA-15-03, an ordinance adding new Article 13 of Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning repair of construction defects. It looks like we have Mr. Jerry Dahl giving a presentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you very much. I guess this is on, I'm not usually up here, am I okay? Yes, you may. I don't, I don't have a PowerPoint, I'm doing this old school, so.
Old school, all right.
A few things always happen when I start talking here, and, and one of them is that the person who runs the trashcans will any minute now have that trashcan with, you know, with the wheels across the, that always, sort of waiting, it's not, not happening. Council, or, excuse me, planning commission, the city council has asked me to draft this construction defects ordinance. You have a memo from me in your packet, and let me make a few points about it, I realize it's kind of a detailed ordinance, hopefully I can add a little clarity for you and kind of give you a way of thinking about it, and, and kind of a, a structure for how you would view it. Obviously, it's changed to Chapter 26 of the code, and therefore, under the code, your recommendation to the council was required. It's either a recommendation they approve it, approve it with conditions, or you recommend they not approve it, and that's completely up to you, and I'd be delighted to help you create your recommendation for them tonight. As you may know, there's a perception out there that there's not much multifamily construction happening in the Denver metro area, and that there is a need for that kind of housing, that quality multifamily housing, whether it be in a condominium context, a other multifamily townhome development, there's just as not much construction going on. I'm the first to admit that there may be lots of factors at play in determining whether or not there's, that market is hot or not hot. It might be the interest rate, it might be market absorption, it might be the, the interest of developers to put their money elsewhere. But one of the issues that was raised both years in 2014 and 2015 in the state legislature was the potential for construction defect claims to be brought against the builder, developer, architect, construction manager, contractor on these projects. And there have been a few high-profile cases in the news, I honestly, until this came up, hadn't followed them very carefully, but there have been some cases that, that where homeowners have brought construction defect claims against builders, and that is also listed as one of the reasons for the decline in the construction, the activity in construction in, in that market, and builders have been saying that. To the extent, and I think we have to take it seriously, if the state legislature's tried to address it two years in a row, then it's an issue. How big an issue it is is for the legislature, and of course, you and the council to determine in terms of local action. Two years in a row, the state legislature put forth a bill, but did not adopt a bill addressing construction defects, and bluntly attempting to create a builder's right to repair before the homeowner would be able to bring suit and sort of bring, bring the, bring the courts into it and slow everything down, because we know courts and lawyers do slow everything down, I'm the first to admit it. That legislation failed, and I did not follow it when I was the attorney for the municipal league. I followed the legislature pretty carefully, but I don't now, so I'm not sure of all of the reasons that that legislation failed, but it, it did. Obviously, there are a couple of, more, probably more than two sides around that, and I promised I'll get to the ordinance in a minute, but I think this background's helpful for you to understand, how should we feel about this? What should we be recommending, if anything, to the council? I'm certain that the homeowner community, and then persons who live and, and buy these units, what the bill does is doesn't deny them their right to, or this ordinance, their right to access the courts, but interposes an interim step between you find a defect, and in life, if I've got defect in my, in my house, and it's been recently built, I file a notice of claim, I can go to district court right away. What this ordinance does, and what the two bills in the legislature did, were to say, you still have that right, but before you exercise that right, the builder has the right to know that there's some problem, you've got the obligation to tell the builder that, the builders then got the opportunity to say, fine, I'll step to the plate and I'll fix that, or no thanks, I think I did a fine job, and go right on to the courts. But you'll notice there's that delay involved in telling the builder and giving the builder the opportunity to respond, and that's really what this ordinance does, and after the legislature failed to act, a number of communities have done so. This ordinance, as you noticed from the memo, is modeled on the Lakewood ordinance. They were, I think, probably the first city to adopt an ordinance that kind of tracked the state statute, and they adjusted it for, to, to read as a, as a local government ordinance. Town of Lone Tree has acted, Arvada has, as has the town of Parker. Parker's ordinance is restricted only to a plat note, which is sort of the last third or so, or last quarter of this ordinance. This ordinance does both things, because council instructed me to have both things, both the construction defect notice and right to repair language in a local code, which it does, and I'll walk through it in a minute, and also required plat note on new subdivision plats for multifamily only, that essentially says, look, the, there is now recorded against the property the right for the, the obligation to go to mediation or arbitration before a construction defect claim can be brought. And so you find it two ways then, in the city code, kind of saying, there's a gatekeeper notice and process you have to go through before, as a homeowner, you can access the courts, and in the plat note, saying, all right, there's required mediation or arbitration for construction defects arising on a property covered by this plat. As you see, they, they address the same issue, and it's to some degree a belt and suspenders approach, but that's what I was directed to draft. So with that in mind, let me kind of tell you what the ordinance does, and, and I thought the best way to do it was this bullet point list, which is on the second page of, of your staff report. To begin with, sitting here while the earlier applications being heard, I of course had the chance to read carefully through the ordinance again, found at least a half a dozen typos and kind of formatting things, and while you can ask me about those, I promise you I'll get them, I'll get them fixed, so there's that, and that's the disclosure. Let's begin with what the, the elements of the ordinance do, and then I can take your questions. It's a new article, applies only to multi, new multifamily construction commenced after the effective date of the ordinance. There's a blank for that, and that'll get filled in, if the council chooses to go forward, we'll fill that in before second reading, and we'll know what the effective date of the ordinance is, and we can then stitch that date in. It's a blank now for, for that reason. It defines a bunch of terms, as it has to. What's a builder? What's a homeowner? And what's a construction defect? Those would be the three big things. The builder's defined very broadly, and I won't page through the ordinance, I'll just tell you, and then we can do that, to include the architect, the designer, the builder, the contractor, and subs. Anybody, basically, to be honest, that would be a defendant in that kind of lawsuit. If my roof is leaking after I buy the condo unit, I'm probably going to name who? The architect, I'm going to name the contractor for sure. If there was a roofer, and I knew it was ABC Roofing, I'll probably name them, so that's, that's what I would do. That's why the definition of builder is pretty broad. As definition of homeowner, that would be the person owning that, that property. And lastly, definition of construction defect, and I actually put it in the, I put it in the memo, and I actually elaborated on, I said it's, it's defined as it was in the Senate bill, I actually added the last phrase, and you'll notice any instance in which the the structure doesn't conform in all material respects to the code, basically, or the manufacturer's specifications. I felt, and again, there's a, there's always subjectivity in legislation, but I felt that that, that was really too far-reaching, because, all right, fine, the terrazzo floor in the bathroom is three inches thick, and the code says it should be four. Is that a construction defect that ought to, you know, that really, that materially does it lower the value of the structure? Does it pose a safety risk to the occupants? No, it's three inches thick, not four. I felt that there should be at least a little bit of a, pardon the phrase, floor, to the kinds of construction defect claims that, that had to go through this notice process. You can certainly feel differently about that, but I felt otherwise you've got a whole bunch of things that have to be subject to this notice process. Maybe it's good that Maybe it's good that it should be very broad. And that's kind of a policy call for you, but I, rather than burying that issue, I wanted to identify it for you. So, once there's a, let's go through the bullets. It's a little process and it's really kind of a dance. The homeowner gives a notice and the builder can respond. And the builder responds and then it's kind of in the homeowner's court back and forth as you read through. So, the claimant homeowner discovers a defect, notifies the builder. There's a form for that and a process for that and notifies the builder's attorney if there is one. The builder has the opportunity then to respond. And in addition, must, if requested, provide copies of the construction documents, et cetera, to help the owner understand whether or not he or she should pursue the claim. The builder has the right to inspect the property. I tell the builder my roof leaks and it's terrible. You know, I think it's fair before we, before the builder's got to make an offer to repair or not, for the builder to say, well, I want to look at that roof and see if it really is your roof. Maybe it's the roof of the unit above you that I did not build and it's leaking all the way through. And so there's an opportunity for the builder to inspect, reasonable business hours, you know, that, the fair amount of detail around that. Builder can inspect. And then the builder has the right to repair the defect. If the builder doesn't acknowledge or see to the notice, provide the information that's indicated there, or choose to make the repair, then the homeowner who has been, let's remember, prevented from filing his or her lawsuit because of this notice process that now the code says you got to go through. If the builder says, I'm not acknowledging this, not sending you the documents, I've inspected and I'm not going to make a repair, I think it is not my fault, then really the process ends. And we go back to life the way it is today, which is if I think there's a defect, I can bring my lawsuit. If however, the builder elects to make the repair, then the homeowner's got to reasonably allow that. You can't tell the builder, fix this and then not give him access to the property, for example. So that's in there. There's a warranty period, two-year warranty period on any repairs. It's not that this is going to be a repair that's not subject to the kind of warranty that you'd see on the original construction. So that's required. Now we're sort of done with the notice, right to repair keeps you from going to court right away, part of the ordinance. And with the last couple of bullets, go to, or at least one of them here goes to the language about condo declarations. There are some condominium declarations that require mediation or arbitration before there can be a construction defect claim. And these are in condo decks that are out there and have been for some time. What the Lakewood ordinance does, what the legislature tried to do and failed, and what this ordinance does is says, look, if those condo declarations, because now the condo association is no longer the developer, you know, originally it's usually controlled by the developer when it's first built. And then when the developers conveyed all the lots, control over the condo association, rightly, goes to the owners. They then have the right to amend their condo declarations or the covenants. The code here is saying is, that's fine, but you don't have the right to amend out, or if you try to amend out an arbitration or mediation clause, which to be blunt is developer-friendly when you think about it. It's there to protect the developer and really the original developer. Let's go to arbitration mediation before we go to court. So, so says the ordinance here. Look, you can amend those clauses, but that amendment is not effective with respect to construction defects alleged to be taking place after you try to amend the clause out. So it really just kind of retains that clause applicable within that development. So that's that next bullet. Any amendment to remove from the declaration, the requirement that the claim go to mediation is not effective with respect to a construction defect that predates the removal of the covenant. I will tell you that it's, there hasn't been, you know, very much of this kind of construction in the city for some time. So the likelihood of that really being applicable here is pretty low. You'd have to have a new project. The, now let's switch to the last couple bullets regarding the HOA board itself. The ordinance requires the HOA board to inform its members when it's thinking of bringing a claim. Up to now, we've been just talking about preventing a homeowner from making, from bringing a claim in court until they've gone through this notice process opportunity to the builder. As often, apparently, as a single homeowner claim, you'll see an HOA bringing a claim on behalf of its owners. Makes sense because if it's a condo, townhome development, you're not really sure which unit it is. As the association, you're bringing the case on behalf of all your members. And that's fine. What the legislature tried to do and what is done here is to say, that's also fine, but you've, there's a little process here whereby you've got to inform your membership of the consequences of bringing the claim. How much is it going to cost? How are you going to pay for it? How will that affect marketability of the units while the case is pending? And you've got to get a majority vote of the owners before you can proceed with litigation. And there's no secret here, that's, to use the lack of any other term, developer-friendly in the sense that that creates a little bit more of an obstacle. It slows down an HOA association actually bringing that claim because they got to tell all their members, we're about to bring this case, but it's going to cost this much, it might come out of your dues, it may well affect the marketability of your units while the lawsuit is pending. Lawsuit might take two years. If you're one of those owners, I'm just telling you how I think it will be in real life, you might be inclined not to vote to bring that case because of the effect on you. It's a majority vote requirement, but that's what it says. And you'll see the last bullet, you, HOA board can't commence that action until it obtains the written consent of majority of the homeowners. Lastly, we have this plat note that mirrors the Parker plat note that is, as I've described before. I recognize and appreciate there's a lot of detail here. It's frankly, a little different and not your typical agenda item, is it? Because it's not specific to a piece of property. It's this construction defect litigation arena that frankly, does not come up in the local government context very often. Construction defect claims that maybe happened in our city typically don't involve the city as a party because the construction's over with. Occasionally, the city will get named, but more often, there'll be subpoena and we just have to provide records showing what the design was or what the approval process was. So this represents, I think, probably action by the city that's a little unusual in the sense that it's not your typical zoning ordinance dealing with a zoning code in that sense. But council was asked that this be brought to them. They're interested in the subject and I think it would be fair for me to describe their interest as being similar to the state legislature, more of a development, you know, are we forestalling development activity in our community because of these cases? What can we do locally to remove at least one obstacle to development and redevelopment of multifamily housing in the city? And this is one tool that the legislature considered and other cities have considered to remove one obstacle. I live in the real world and will tell you that, I'm sure there are a number of obstacles, but you get to a goal in life in pieces and especially in legislation. And this is at least, you know, there's very little I think the council can do about the lending market for developers of multifamily housing, just on the finance side. They're not the Federal Reserve. They don't have the right to set the interest rate of federal banks, but they can at least do something like this and that's what they're proposing. I really appreciate your willingness to listen to this sort of arcane discussion and to wade your way through this ordinance. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jerry. Amanda, let's start with you. Do you have any questions? Emery? Questions? Okay. Donna? Questions? Steve?
Just for clarification, this would not apply to multifamily apartments or rental properties, is that correct?
I'll look at the definition, I think it would.
But, I guess, those would be different in that usually they're owned by a single individual or corporation versus an HOA, right? Something like that. So, you're not going to sue yourself.
Yeah, then you've just got one claimant.
Because there is, my understanding is there is a lot of multifamily development occurring in the metro area, it just tends to be on rental, on apartments. If you go down to lower downtown and things of that, and all those buildings going up are apartments and not townhomes and condos, so.
Single developer.
Exactly. Thank you.
There are apartment projects, obviously, that can be individually owned, but they're not common, I think. The Pernod on East Seventeenth Avenue is an apartment building that actually is, the individual apartments are owned by individual apartment owners. But that's not a common circumstance and I'll bet it probably doesn't happen at all here in Wheat Ridge.
Pam? Questions? Scott? Questions?
Yes, I have several questions. Thank you. I am a licensed landscape architect and I have professional liability insurance. This is a very big issue for me. The way that the language is written, it's basically saying, so my current understanding is that after substantial completion, the statute limitations is eight years for typical projects in the state of Colorado. Is it?
I'd have to dig out, you know, title 12-80, I think. That's where the statute limitations is to tell you that.
So what this is doing is this is adding a potential, another two years on top of that.
It totals the statute.
Right.
Until you've gone through the process. That's correct.
So from a designer perspective, for multifamily apartments, I wouldn't be interested because it's adding another two years above and beyond what is normal. I design multifamily projects frequently, very frequently. The other thing is that if the intent is to, the reason I don't design condos, because you hit the point, you're not dealing with one owner like a typical multifamily apartment, you're dealing with several. And that's something I typically, I haven't touched to date in the state of Colorado. And so I can see what the intent is, but there's some issues with the multifamily language. And I think that the language should be very specific and it should be condos, HOAs, and not have multifamily in there as far as language. One of the other things is that the builder definition does have a broad definition. I can tell you that the builder implies the actual constructing of, but the big thing is that I am strictly forbidden as a designer from warranting that word, warranty or guarantee. I cannot warranty or guarantee anything. And the way that this is written, it says that the builder, which means, that could be a landscape architect, has to warranty for two years.
Any repair that would be made.
Yeah, so the way this is written, if somebody reads this and understands this, they're not going to do a project because they can't warranty, they can't guarantee anything. So those are some of my comments and suggestions. Like I said, I see your intent. I think this is great that this is coming to help. You know, the helpful things are, yes, giving the, I think that the builders and designers, my suggestion is you really need to break those out and make those a little bit clearer. I think that if the designer could, you know, have that opportunity to fix something, to design something, if something is wrong and they need to redesign something, that's great instead of the way it's set up now and going strictly to court. Thank you.
That's a really good point. Okay. Jerry, I guess my question, it goes back to the two-year warranty, more from the, I guess, the homeowner's perspective. As a designer, not in the architectural world, but who has to carry professional liability insurance, I, I'm familiar with that, not being able to guarantee or warranty work. It is a concern among people who create plans but don't necessarily build them or execute them or fabricate them. So that distinction, I think, is important. But from the homeowner's standpoint, you know, two-year warranty, is that time span sort of what's written into the other ordinances in the other municipalities that you studied?
Yes, the two-year warranty on the repair.
On the repair, yes.
Yeah, that's, and I don't know what magic there is in that. I've got the senate bill here and I could look at that to see if that was in the state statute or proposed state statute as well, although that answer wouldn't, wouldn't, you know, give, I used to lobby at the legislature and sometimes they get it right. So I'm not sure what sort of thought went into that period of time. It doesn't offend me in the sense that two years is the statute limitation for most other contract claims outside of the construction arena. Interestingly, the city requires typically a two-year warranty on or guarantee on landscaping materials, on roadways, streets, you know, curb, gutter, sidewalk that will be built and dedicated to the city under the theory that if you're going to find problems that are construction-related, probably two years is when you're going to find them. And after that, you know, maybe it's less and less construction-related and more just O and M related. So I think that timeframe, you know, seems about right.
Okay. All right. It's a good point. I'd be curious to see what this proposed state statute language had, but I can see the rationale behind two-year. As a homeowner, it seems, you know, I could certainly advocate for why a homeowner might want it to be longer than that, you know, because two years on some repairs, you know, you might not see the severe weather event that caused your roof to leak or whatever because of that particular defect in two years. It might not be that regular.
It may be also that we're talking about a repair here, which, and again, I'm not in the construction industry, but which is maybe a little more difficult to guarantee for a longer period of time because you're repairing a structure that's already there and you're having to mirror new materials with old ones. And that's, you have a little less control, I guess, over the finished product in that context than you do if you're building it from the ground up. So that's me kind of imagining a reason for that. While you're taking testimony and having other questions, I'd be happy to look at the state statute and see what kind of time period they plugged in there.
Okay. My only other question would be, is there any precedent for language that holds the builder liable for secondary damages incurred by that potential defect that are incurred during the time taken to deal with this noticing process? So for example, your roof's leaking, you got to send out a notice, you got to deal with the back and forth and all of this and all the time, you know? You've taken steps to maybe mitigate that to whatever extent you can, but your roof is still leaking, you still might have some damage. Is there any sort of precedent for that other additional remediation to property?
Couple of things. There's not a process in here for sort of yet another notice and at some point you got to say, kind of ring the curtain down. I think both parties probably, you know, one repair cycle is probably going to be it. Having said that though, let's remember that what this does really is just prevent or it delays the homeowner from bringing the district court action for damages for, during the penancy of this repair, notice and repair process. Once that's over with, then you're free to, even if you've gotten a repair, you don't have to be okay with that and you are now free to go to court. The hope, of course, is that very few cases then, the whole idea is let's not spend our time on lawyers and courts, let's spend the money on fixing it. But in the circumstance in which it either wasn't fixed or the fix itself resulted in delay that was additional injury, then I'm, as the homeowner, once I've kind of gone through this process, I'm free to go to court. And when I do, I will absolutely list all of those damages, including lodging when I was out of the house while they were taking the roof off and putting it back on and, you know, that's all certainly available.
Okay, so there's no, this doesn't limit the homeowner's actions that they take away?
It's a delay, but not a limit in terms of the scope of the case that the homeowner or the claim the homeowner could bring in district court.
Okay. Any more questions for Jerry? I'm trying to locate. Staff, you guys have? Okay, staff, you guys have anything more to add? Okay. Would anyone here like to speak related to this? Yeah, come on up and give us your name and address.
Be nice to me.
Nancy Snow, 11155 West Fortieth. For those of you who don't know me, I was also on the planning commission and the city council at one time. But I want to give you a little background of why I have some knowledge of construction defects in a very specific kind. When I worked for the Colorado Civil Rights Division, after eighty-eight, there were some very specific requirements of handicap standards for multifamily housing. So all I want to tell you is, we had a lot of cases where home builders, whatever you want to call them, didn't design them right, didn't build them right, despite some pretty specific, so I have seen, I realize it's a certain kind of construction defect, but in a couple of cases, I saw some other things, that in addition to not meeting the handicap requirements, you know, the floor was settling, the roof was leaking, the walls were cracking. But anyway, my comments on this, I guess, it really bothers me that the city is taking such an effort to protect builders. I was, I won't say I was shocked, but I was kind of horrified when I watched the city council discussing this, and had a builder sit at the table and help write the ordinance. So my question to the city council, and to you, is where are the people that oppose this at the state level? You always think you'd want to ask, it was in the paper all the time, all kinds of articles, and the big organization that opposed it at the state level is something called the Community Associations Institute. It's not as big as the Apartment Association or the Realtors, but it's very large, all over the United States. It doesn't seem to have been invited here, and it wasn't invited to city council. They have a lot of reasons for opposing this, because they tried very hard, two years, and they didn't get it passed. So I would think you might want to think, why was that? I have a couple of, I always mind, excuse me, the whereses. I read all the whereses, I call them, that he wrote, and I don't even think they're true. You know, a genuine demand, statistics show, no owner occupied, multifamily are, are being developed in around Wheat Ridge, well, there's almost no land left, but by the way, there have been quite, not a few, but there's one that's just finished last year. And this is, the consensus is, the scarcity is because of these substantial judgments, and that they're not writing policies. So I would like to ask the staff, for example, did anybody ask the builder of the townhomes on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, did they have any trouble getting insurance? I don't know. It got built. There's some condos not too far from me, around the corner from the rec center, and they sold. There's a big building, it's a, it's not condos, as you all know, really, big one, right off the corner of Wadsworth and Forty-Fourth. So is it true in our little city that this, you know, that they can't build because of these things? I really wonder. But anyway, what I mind the most, I think, is that it's written to protect the developer. You read it really carefully. It's to protect the developer. You have the responsibility, or the city council does, to protect people who buy units in this city also. And I don't really like that this is such a big effort to protect this poor, poor developer. Anyway, there's a lot of things I don't like about this, but there's one thing I think is really very, very unfair and impossible. It says that in a condo, the homeowners association, which by the way, a lot of people belong to, and they want to be able to count on their HOA and the HOA attorney to help them if they have a construction defect. It says you have to get fifty percent of anybody, the language is kind of out of the, I forgot, what's it say, Mary? Anybody with an interest. You know, you can't get fifty percent of any group to do anything. I mean, this would be like, we change our voting laws, that fifty percent of the voters have to elect somebody, not fifty percent of the people who show up. You can't get fifty percent. That one thing makes it impossible. First of all, many home builders keep some of the units, and I don't see anything that was written in here that they don't count, that they should be subtracted before you do the fifty percent. A lot of them, own quite a few of them, for years and years, they own a lot at the beginning. Many are owned by trusts, LLCs, out-of-town people. We tried, it sounds like a different subject, we were going to try to get signatures in this city to change which fire department would serve the city. And we went all through this. How indeed do we even locate the owners? It doesn't say, does the husband and wife both have to sign? Read what it says, you'll never figure it out from the ordinance. If it's owned by a company, who gets to sign? How do you find them? Anyway, fifty percent is truly, truly impossible. So you've taken away from people, if this passes, the ability of somebody in an HOA to use their HOA. Now, by the way, I can't stand HOAs, but that's a different issue. If I lived in one, I would want to be able to count on my board and my attorney to help me. And I don't think you, I don't think you can with this ordinance. And the last thing I'd like to know is, I know some other cities have done it, why would Wheat Ridge put its neck out? Somebody is going to get really mad, they're going to have a terrible mess, and this law is going to keep them from suing, and guess who they're going to come after? The city. The next thing somebody will pass is to make cities liable when they miss a construction defect. That's not mentioned here. I don't know why, if it's such a big issue on the state level, they don't just leave it at the state level until they figure out what a majority of our legislature figures is a fair thing to do. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments and your questions. Jerry, can you address some of Ms. Snow's concerns? Thank you.
Some anyhow, relative to the ability to get consents from, from people, clearly there's policy element here than the Nancy, or, you know, does a good job of articulating. I will tell you that I, I think there's probably a continuum here. You are required to get fifty percent on this board to vote for something. You're required to get a supermajority on the council and here for certain things. Who's kidding who? You're all here, we know who you are, you're a small group. That's kind of one extreme. On the other extreme is trying to get signatures from residents. But I don't think that, neither one of those two extremes, frankly, is a good analogy to what's here, which is somewhere in the middle, and I admit that. And it's, it's somewhere in the middle because it's fifty-seven owners, or twenty-two owners, or I'm going to give them units. That's not as small as your group, and it's certainly not as large as the percentage requirement, fifteen-hundred or whatever, what is it, twelve-hundred signatures for an initiative? She should know, she just finished working on one. The, the point is, it's, it's, you do know where they are, they actually own property. That's easier than a bunch of residents. I get it that it's, it's a, a not as easy as a small group like this. I will say to you that, that for covenants, usually very often, it's two-thirds to get them amended, isn't it? It's very difficult. The subdivision I live in actually just finished getting its covenants amended, and it got two-thirds signed up. It's not impossible, if you want to do it. Policy call for you, but I wanted to give you some context. It's always kind of useful to think about, well, what are the extremes, and where does this fall, and what is a proper comparison, and what isn't? And, and I'll leave it at that. You had asked me about the Senate bill, and I did look silent on the issue of warranty doesn't require it. So, full disclosure, full disclosure there. I think if you're going to go through a process, and builder's going to actually be able to do a repair, the homeowner who was, when you think about it, the homeowner was prevented from going to court, so I think as a homeowner, I'd want to have something more than just a repair, for, in return for my, having been frozen out of court for six months, I think I'd want a, a warranty, you know? In, in that sense, while I don't disagree with Nancy that there are developer favorable aspects of this, this ordinance, the warranty requirement, I think, is an owner favorable requirement, and we talked about what the time should be, but, but I do think, if you're going to do it, that makes sense. Two things I heard from Commissioner Rome, and I'll, depending upon what your action is, if it's to recommend approval or not, I'll certainly recommend to the council, because I'm, I'm frankly convinced that, that it makes sense to delete the requirement for designers to warranty those repairs. If they're not otherwise able to, then you have a code section that they're not, that they're, horns of a dilemma. You know, do the repair, but you can't warranty it, and now you're in violation of the ordinance. The other thing I heard was apartments and single ownership, where you have a individual company or whatever that owns an apartment building. Different situation, probably no need to have a, to have the ordinance extend to that, to that level. Those are the comments I have regarding Nancy's questions about, you know, what, you know, who were the forces aligned at the legislature? I really can't tell you, because I wasn't there. And there it is. Happy to answer any further questions. Take notes such that I can accurately convey to the council what you had to say.
I just wanted to state that do we, does this wording, multifamily, is too broad, and that does then include apartment owners, or apartment dwellers with a single owner of the building? Why don't they just say condos and townhomes?
I think we-
I mean, rather than multifamily. Multifamily could be a fortress we have in the city.
Sure.
I mean, multifamily is sort of a broad brush. I think you're trying to hit this with condos and condos specifically. I think, I think townhomes is not where the real problem in multifamily demise of construction. I think it's really the condo aspect. So can that be changed?
Sure, what I'll do, it's council that will get to do that, but that can be a part of your recommendation, if you're making motion to, to recommend approval with changes or recommend, whatever you, I'm not telling you what to recommend, but you, I would definitely include in your motion those points, and I promise you, I'll note them down, so that when I make this same report to council and hits council, I can, I'll tell them that. And frankly, I agree with you.
Amanda, anything else? Anything else, guys? Okay.
Yeah, I have one more. I'd like to add-
Commissioner Dorsey, so from a professional liability standpoint, the, the number one thing, and it's like a thousand times, is condos. That's it. That's the thing that, when, just so you guys know, so when, if somebody does condo work, if I was to take on condo work, at a minimum, my professional liability insurance would double, at a minimum. If the condo work is fifty percent of my total billing, I get dropped. It's huge. It's huge. Very big thing. The townhomes, not as much of an issue. HOAs, that's an issue, because you have multiple people, but it's, it's much, much worse with the condos, because typically when, it's not a matter of if you're getting sued, you will get sued, and you get pulled in to everything. It can be the landscape edging. Everything gets pulled in for that. And so that's, that's the biggest concern that I have, is, is, yes, it's the condos, the, the senior housing, that would, I would think that would be multifamily. You know, so it, I agree, it is too broad.
I think the condo thing, because I did do a condo development myself at one time, and, you know, we had an HOA and all of the stuff, and there were some problems. I mean, I was the developer, I had contractors, we had some issues, and some of those folks, you know, it was hard to resolve. It was just noise, noise between units. Somebody would be playing, you know, their stereo, and so we ended up having to tear into some walls and put extra installation, insulation in order to ratify all this. I mean, you know, they were miniscule-type things, as far as I was concerned, but it was bothersome for some of those owners. And, you know, it just, I'd never do another condo project myself. I mean, it just, it just doesn't work.
So, let's see, do we want to entertain a motion and then discuss it?
I would like to make a motion for continuance, to, to have this reworded per our suggestions. I feel a little, well, I feel very uncomfortable with the way it's worded now. I see the intent. I'm not against a warranty for the builder. Typically warranties are one to two years, is what I put in my plan, so two years, I think, is not that far off. But just the, there's a lot of things in here that, you know, whether or not, whether, you know, if I voted no on this, if somebody wanted to make a motion for it to go forward, and I voted no, and it gets passed, you know, what does that mean? You know, it's not going to really, I still won't do any condos, you know, that won't change. But I think if the intent, you know, if the wording doesn't get changed, I, I think there's going to be, you know, the city's going to think back and, you know, and I don't think that's the intent of Mr. Dahl. I think he wants to change the wording. I think the intent from city council is to promote some different housing stocks, such as condos. And this would be a really good opportunity if the wording is changed. This would be a good opportunity to get some, some condos, instead of just apartments. There's, there's definitely a, a lot of demand for housing stock, and just, this gives a different tool for, for the city to use. So, that's why I'd, I'd like to make that motion for continuance.
Okay, we have a motion for continuance. I have a second.
Can I clarify, is this the continuing the public hearing, or continuing for action? Which?
Probably be continuing. Continuing for action would mean we just continue this until a later date, when you, when you have something adjusted.
Redrafted, yes.
Yeah. So that's what, that's, that's the motion on the table?
Yes.
Well, that needs to be seconded still.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Yeah, I guess, Mike, I have a question. So, is staff, in particular, is city attorney, are you under a certain directive, or is council under a certain expectation for a certain schedule on, on this? Is there?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's, 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 first reading that, don't believe, no. Don't think so. No, I, I, this is not, it would be a little trickier if this were a rezoning, for example, or something that, that they'd already done first reading on, and we were under that kind of schedule.
Right.
But this is a code amendment that frankly has been, they've study sessioned it a couple of times, and so that's a long way of saying, I, I think that, that they're not under a schedule that would prevent you from taking another look at it, especially if it could improve.
So before, I guess then, before a vote's made on that continuance, if, if a, if a vote is made to continue it, does staff have information that they, that they feel like they've gotten from the commissioners to update, or to make edits accordingly?
Yeah, I think that I have. I've been making detailed notes here, and there, there are some things that you pointed out, I think, very helpful. There's some things I want to research a little, you know, just in terms of how to articulate, for example, the designer/architect warranty obligations, and how to appropriately carve them out, so I, I, I get it done properly. But, you know, that, I, I think I know where to focus.
Thank you.
Nancy Snow, Boystown.
I just wanted to ask you, if you're going to continue, if you would ask that somebody from, that represents homeowners, or, you know, the council?
Well, anybody's allowed to come and speak. Well, the, the, the meeting notice is put up, just like any other meeting notice. I would love to hear what they have to say, but they have to show up, like you did. I'm very, very pleased that you came to show up. I just wanted to mention, Jerry, in addition to the other concerns the other commissioners had, something else that I would love to see with some of the language where we talk in, where the ordinance mentions that there is, statistics show that almost no owner occupied multi-family developments are being built here. It might be helpful to have some specific statistics cited or to have those statistics available for testimony when we're considering this. Also, the language in the next whereas underneath that where we talk about the general consensus, is that the scarcity of condominiums available for sale is a result of litigation climate? That seems a little vague. Makes me want to ask, well, consensus of who? So it begs for some facts, or just, just a fleshing out of the facts, I guess. That's probably something that you could be expected to be asked about the next time we see this, so, great. Any other comments before we vote on the motion? Okay, we have a motion to continue for action available for a vote, so please vote.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, one more thing? Okay.
Yeah, do we need to continue it to a specific date, or are we just going to leave it open-ended?
Continue to your next meeting, because I know that I won't have any trouble getting it ready for your next meeting. Point is that.
So the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, I believe, is August 6th. But let me-
Okay.
So can we amend the motion then to, to continue it till August 6th?
Yes.
Is that acceptable?
Is that acceptable? Okay. And a second to approve that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no other discussion, we'll vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thanks very much. See you in August.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. All right, our last item, before other items. Case number Z O A dash one five dash zero four, an ordinance amending sections two six dash eight zero six and two six dash eight zero eight of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law is Concerning Special Flood Hazard Area Regulations and the Administration of Flood Plane Control Regulations. And we have Mark Westberg for staff.
Hi. I talk really fast, especially since it's 9:30, so generally that's appreciated when I'm at the end of a meeting, but if I am going too fast, just help me to slow down. We're going to talk about some, some ordinance amendments, and the staff report was pretty comprehensive, I think, but just want to mention a few things. I also want to plug a few things too while I'm here. I'm an opportunist, so I will. Just that we're all at risk of flooding, doesn't matter where we are, just some of us are at much greater risk than others. So I want to just cover some floodplain map history. Most of you guys have been on commission for a while. We did some stuff a couple of years ago where we adopted new maps and did some things, but some of you are new, so, or at least I don't recognize you, one of the two. So just want to cover some things. Our original mapping was done back in the seventies as a part of a nationwide effort to map floodplains. They realized that we were spending a lot of money dealing with floodplain damages and stuff to people. Our last map that we did was back in 2003, was the latest revision. We just updated our maps. They're now digital, and those were adopted and were effective on February 5th of 2014. So our maps are pretty new. We've had all kinds of impacts because of our new maps. We won't go into all of that today. But that just is a little graphic showing in general what a floodplain looks like and where the floodway is and those kind of things. We won't go into that much today either. I will put a plug in, in March of every year, we have a floodplain open house that we are now doing. And so, and we've, what we, what we hear from folks is it's very informative and all that kind of fun stuff, and I'm relatively entertaining. So the things we're talking about tonight on the floodplain regulations, what we're proposing is that landlords need to discuss floodplain status with their tenants. It needs to be disclosed. We think that's important because most tenants don't know they're in the floodplain. Now, part of our annual mailing for that March meeting we have, we actually send it to both property owners and, and potential tenants, trying to catch those folks, let them know. But we want to let, make sure tenants know they're at risk of whether they're in a floodplain or not. The other two are related, that lot surveys show floodplain boundaries and the construction sites have the floodplain boundary staked. And this is just so that everybody knows that they're on a floodplain and they're at the edge. If you're completely out of the floodplain, these two requirements don't apply to your project. If you're completely within a floodplain, these two requirements don't apply. It's only those people that straddle the floodplain. That was Lauren's language when she wrote my memo, by the way, so it was really good. And the last one is no new septic systems in the floodplain. We don't allow septic systems in our city as a general rule, but we do have a hardship clause for those. This closes that loophole for in the floodplain because they just seems like a bad idea to everybody. So what are the impacts of that? Renters' insurance policies are available for as little as $50 a year. Now, I haven't checked to see what that covers, but that's pretty cheap insurance for a rental thing. I know when I used to rent, I always had renters' insurance, and in my, my decades of renting, I never, ever used it, but I had it anyway because it was a good idea. Normal insurance policies will not cover flooding, so this is why we think it's important they know. And as we mentioned, one of the things that was brought up by, by the community development director was, was how are people going to know they have to do this? Well, in our annual mailing, we'll add a clause to our, our annual mailing invite that reminds landlords that they need to be doing this. And Nancy, who's now left, came to our, but we had an open house on a public meeting on this, this, just to give people a chance, and, and she, she's got several rental properties, a couple of rental properties in the floodplain, and, and we talked about this, and she didn't seem like it was a bad idea. The lot surveys, again, it's limited to those properties that are in the floodplain, and the staff report mentions, we've got GIS stuff that is really amazing right now, and now that we have a D-Firm, a digital flood insurance remap, we can fold that stuff in. If somebody comes in and says, I want to build a project, I have no problem pulling their lot up with the aerial and with everything and plotting that off for them. They can literally take the information and just trace it right onto their plan. So it, it really, in the old days when we had the paper maps and they were to scale, you couldn't tell where things were, this would have been a really burdensome requirement. We think, we think this is cake now. And just that, that we don't, we just think septic systems are a bad idea in a floodplain. So part of what brought this on is that, that we are a part of the CRS, and our next slide is going to talk about this more, but we get some points for actually enacting these regulations. In the staff report, we talk about the fact we're going through our five-year recertification this year, and so I've been reading through the manual. It's really good stuff. It's 600 pages of really dry federal regulation kind of stuff. I only read about 400 pages because 200 pages is coastal, and at least until global warming gets a lot worse, we don't have to worry about that here. So I didn't read the coastal stuff, but I have, I did take a test on it. But I have read through all this stuff, and, and so we get a fair number of points for enacting these regulations. The total for us is 41 points just for these regulations. So what, what is the CRS? It's our community rating system. Our current rating that we've had for five years now, we've got a total of 2,021 points. That makes us a class six community. There's only seven other Colorado communities, about 50 communities in Colorado that participate in the CRS. Only seven of those have a class six or above. We're one of those, and we're one of the, we're the smallest, I think, that has a class six. What happens with that is most folks get a 20% discount on their insurance. The folks who are in the floodplain, if you're out of the floodplain, you get flood insurance, you don't get this discount. But if you're in the floodplain and you get flood insurance, you get this discount. We think that's a big deal. 20% is a nice big number. What we're working on this year is we're working on becoming a class five community. Every 500 points you go up, you raise a class. So we've got to get from 2,000, a little over 2,000, to somewhere over 2,500. Well, in the rewrite of the manual, they're giving a lot more points for open space, a lot of other things, and we have lots of floodplain that's open space. And so right now, and I've maybe added the open space stuff in here, we're almost 2,800 right now. So we're approaching actually class four territory. There are some prerequisites for class four that I don't think we meet. There's two of them we don't meet right now, and we're working on one of those right now with Jeffco, with developing a multi-hazard plan. The other one, I'm not sure what that prerequisite is, so I have to ask somebody and figure that out, and we'll try and do that next year. Because I really think we'll actually hit class four points. With class five, we give all of our folks a 25% discount. With a class four, we'd be at 30%, which is a huge, huge benefit for a lot of our folks that are in the floodplain. So the National Flood Insurance Program, just to give you some ideas on where we are with this, in 2014, we don't have the 2015 numbers, we had 244 flood insurance policies in our little town. This is up from 50, from 50 up, we had 100, like 190 last year. This year we had 244. Because of that new mapping, a lot more folks were forced to go get flood insurance. We pay $200,000 in, in annual premiums. Because of our discount that we get, we save about $34,000. We have about $56 million in property insured right now in the city, which is a really big number. We've got, and you'll notice the numbers here, we've got 127 people that are out of the special flood hazard area that actually have flood insurance. Apparently my worry about if you have a basement, you ought to go get flood insurance, is getting out there and working pretty well. The folks that, the folks that are in the floodplain, we've got 211 of those who are what are called pre-firm. That means they was, houses were built before we knew a floodplain was there. So they sort of get a discount. They, they start at a lower rate. Most, for most folks, that means about $1,000 a year for flood insurance. One of the things that's happening is that there's a, there's a, there's, because of, and this is talked about in the staff report, because of the big storms we've had, Katrina and Ivan and, and Superstorm Sandy, FEMA is now $23 billion in debt. The NFIP is $23 billion in debt to the federal government. They were 24, they made a billion dollar payment last year. We thought that was really good that they were able to pull it off. Well, they, they did some legislation in 2012 that, that changed, that was a game changer for folks on flood insurance. They revised that in 2013 to scale some of that back because people were literally getting priced out of their homes with flood insurance. The trend is to get people what's called a full risk rate. The farther below the floodplain you are, the higher your rate is. We've got some people on our floodplanes that are, that are four feet below, their house is four feet below the flood elevation, that base flood elevation. Their insurance rate at full risk is probably $20,000 a year. That's more than they'll likely pay for their mortgage that they've got, and it's just, it's pricing people out of houses. And so that's why we think our discount, even at 20 grand, we're saving them, you know, like, like, like $4,000. So we think keeping these discounts is really important. And that was really the, the reason we started looking at this. And so I just, that's all I've got, except unless you guys have questions.
Scott, do you have questions?
Yeah, I just had one question. I think this sounds great. The one question I had is, what happens if the landlord does not disclose to the renter the home, the home floods, and then the renter finds out, like, hey, wait a minute, you're supposed to disclose this? So he brings up a lawsuit. Would the city, the first part of this question is, would the city lose status? Because that was-
No, this is, this is a very similar disclosure to the asbestos and the lead and those kind of things. When I used to rent, I rented a house in northern Nevada, and I had very responsible landlords. And so they gave me a disclosure form about asbestos and lead and all of it, because the house was built in the seventies, there was a chance it had asbestos and those kind of things. So it's a very similar disclosure. It's one of those things that, that responsible landlords will do, and we want them to do. Folks that are irresponsible about asbestos and lead will probably be irresponsible about this also. But that's also why we as, as the city are going to try to target all those tenants that we know about with, with our annual mailing. What we do is we get the, we get the, the property owner, and then we also get the mailing address, and if those things, those two things don't jive, if the, the property owner's mailing address doesn't jive with where he is, we're also going to send something to that property.
Okay, so, and, and would you consider having some type of signed agreement with the, with the renter and/or the landlord? I'm thinking something along the lines of, I know, for instance, and we've talked about this in City Fort Collins, there has, there's like a disclosure about that you can only have, you can't have more than three people, and so the, the renter has to sign that agreement, and the, you know, the landlord has to sign that agreement. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that there's no, there's no gaps, you know, the-
Right, right. And that was one of the Ken, Ken Johnstone's concerns, was that how are we going to enforce this? We're really not going to enforce this. It's just one of those things, it's, it's very similar to the asbestos and lead thing, that, that, you know, the, the homeowner would actually print something off the internet that they used. I would expect someone, they could just add to that same form, we told you about asbestos, we told you're in the floodplain or out of the floodplain, those kind of things. So we had several landlords show up at our, at our open house, and we talked with them about it. He says, okay, well, I've got my properties, and the house is out, and that's what we want you to disclose, just a simple statement says the property's in the floodplain, but the building itself is out, let the, let the renter know that. And then if the renter chooses to go get flood insurance, he's going to pay a really low rate because he's actually, the house is out of the floodplain. So it's, it's just one of those things that we're trying to, we're trying to make sure that everyone that's in a floodplain knows what their risk is so they can take appropriate steps.
Okay, thank you.
Pam, do you have questions?
I do have a comment. As a landlord, I would like them to know, because I think it shifts liability.
And I think it does too. I think it actually removes some of that liability from you, that why didn't you disclose to me that you knew? Everyone should know, I've been mailing out letters to people for a couple of years now. So everyone should know if they're in a floodplain or not at this point.
Steve?
Do you know approximately how many properties in the city are in a floodplain?
I don't know the properties, well, I, I used to know, and I used to have a stat on that, but I was keeping this short because she put me at the end of the meeting. So we, we've got, with the remapping, we, we had about 80 properties removed from the floodplain, about 190 added in. So our net was, we gained about 100 more properties. I think we've got close to 4, 400 to 500, somewhere in that range. I know we have 550 some odd buildings in the floodplain, that includes sheds, so it's, it's some number less than 500 most likely, but that's, that's where, that's where we are with, and I don't know how that compares with the overall city. We've got, we've got just a handful of neighborhoods that are hit really hard. The Clearveil neighborhood that's, that's at the bottom of the hill, downstream of 44th Avenue Bridge is hit really hard by these new maps and also by, by where they are in comparison to the creek. We've got a couple of other neighborhoods, mostly on the north side of the creek, because we own most of the south sides of the creek. We have a little bit of properties on Leaning Gulch at the very, at the very upstream end of our city that are, that are in the floodplain, but most of it's right on Clear Creek. We've got a couple hundred just in that Clearveil neighborhood alone.
Are you, and then on the septic system issue, are you aware of any homes that have, currently have one in the floodplain?
I think, I think we do have some down there. I don't know of them specifically, but we, we do, the, the ordinance is specifically written to allow repair and maintenance of those. So if your system completely fails, you could rip it all out and build an entirely new one to do that, but you, you can't add a new septic system to the, the list of, that we don't have.
There, there's a few that are north of Clear Creek, kind of down where it was zoned ag, that have-
On the south side of Clear Creek, we've got some that are, that have septic down there all the way.
If they currently have one and they need to rebuild it, would this allow them to rebuild it if the current one's in the floodplain though?
Yes.
It would?
Yeah, we still would allow that. The ordinance language actually specifically allows repair and maintenance and reconstruction.
Okay. And then my final question, on, on the staff report, you said you had this open house, right? And you said that the meeting was well-attended with around 20 property owners, but you don't say how it went. Were they, were they irate property owners? Were they ecstatic? Were they?
Well, it was, I, I think it started like most of my meetings, some people were a little nervous and concerned, and by the time I got done with them, they were all pretty okay with it. And we, we let everybody have a chance to talk, and, and we had one guy who's just, we have some anti-government folks out there, we always do, and, and they like to rail about things. And, and so we talked about what these regulations do, and what we're doing as a city and that kind of thing. And one of my, my plugs I always do is, is that this is the one part of my job that I know I directly positively impact our residents. Because Mayor and I, Mayor, Mayor carried this torch by herself for a long time, and, and we were a class seven community. We've gotten, together have gotten us up to class six, we hope to get to class five. We think this is a, this is a great service the city provides, and people can't argue against that. There's no way they can say, we think what you're doing with the CRS is a bad idea. You know, so it's hard to argue against us saving them money.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Donna, questions?
Yeah, where, where are the maps? Where kind of are the maps?
We have them in our, in our electronic mapping system. I have paper maps available also, but if anybody calls me, and this happens often, people will call me and say, what's my floodplain status? I need, my insurance company wants me to, a flood determination letter. We'll put the letter together, and actually, we, we zoom in on just their property and show where the flood maps are. We show the topo, we show the base flood elevation, we can provide them a lot of information. This is all housed digitally in our geographic information system.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Emery?
Amanda?
All right.
Mr. Scher, I have one more question.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um, uh, do you know, so, did you say there's roughly five hundred properties in the flood plane?
Yeah, somewhere in that number, a little less than five hundred properties.
And, and of those properties, how many approximately are empty lots? I'm just trying to think of like, how mu, how many would the proposed, you can't build a septic system, would that really affect of those five hundred?
Well, and, and, you know, and again, we had someone who wanted to build a new property and they were going to have to, they want to propose a septic because the way they, where were they going to build it, they would have to pump up a hill for their sewer? And our chief building official said, no, you've got to pump up the hill for the sewer. He, our chief building official who's, who's gone now, but, but most, most folks, septic's a bad idea when you've got some way of getting to Santer, even if it's expensive. And, and so this is, this closes that one loophole for that emergency thing. And, uh, most of the things that are sort of at the bottom of the hill are open space, so I don't know that, we've not had a, we've had one septic request in the, the eight years I've been here, so I don't, and that was denied. So this, this, we don't think this is a big burden on folks and we just, we just think for the sake of their eventual basement and everything else, we think putting septic in a flood plane's a bad thing.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, and I don't have anything to add, so, uh, thanks, it's very comprehensive.
I've got, I've got a couple more things just to schedule. We are planning on going to city council in August for first and second reading on this. Um, our, our recertification generally occurs in September, so we were on a little bit of a time crunch to this. And because it's now ten o'clock, I'll just give you a plug for my video. We have our video. We took an award. I brought my award.
Very nice.
It was outside. It, it was third place, I think. But it was still, it was the nationwide thing. We got an award for our video. So if you go to our website, to the city website, if you go on the flood plane page, you can find the video there. If you also just go to the top of the hour, it's also there, or if you're, if you're a young punk, I, I'm not, um, you can go to YouTube, my wife is, um, she goes on YouTube all the time. But if you just search Wheat Ridge Flood Plane, our video will pop up. It's super informative, it's super, it's super good. We got an award for it, it's about eight minutes long, or I'd show it to you tonight,